Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, council members, if you would please stand for the invocation that will be given by Pastor Kerry Knox Westerwick, First Presbyterian Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, it's great to see you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and honorable members of council and the citizenry of this wonderful city, I invite you to join me in a spirit of prayer. Holy One, we thank you for this day and all people gathered here, and for the purpose of this gathering, we all know that this is a meeting of great import and that each person present harbors vital concerns. You alone know the depth of these cares. You know too that each person has a viewpoint to share, so please grant us ears to hear and minds to know the respect that everyone truly deserves. Quiet anxiety and fear as only you can do and make this a place where freedom flourishes in every human heart. Each council representative, we ask your blessing upon. We know that they have accepted their elected roles and the charge to do the best they can for the sake of this city, dealing with equity and fairness toward all people. Bless them with that resolve and give them individual and corporate minds to fulfill their oaths of office. Create in all people here minds and hearts for the true prosperity of this city. We also ask for the generosity of spirit to grow within each person gathered in this place. Remind us that all will truly be well. Bless this gathering with grace, temperance, and goodwill. We offer this in your most holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Westerwick. Before you leave, I want to publicly thank you. I did this the other day. The First Presbyterian Church hosted our annual volunteers luncheon for our seniors this year, and each year we recognize the volunteer of the year, and we had two runner-ups this year and one winner. And I want to thank you and your church for what you do in our community and being able to step in at times like this. We normally have that luncheon at Trinity each year, and because of the renovations and things going on at Trinity, the fact that you stepped up and offered up the First Presbyterian Church, and it was well done. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, bless you.
It's our pleasure.
Yep, absolutely.[202.84][202.84](Applause). Members of the City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Six members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of April 13th, 2015, a call meeting of April 14th, 2015, and a regular meeting of April 14th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, 6-0.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, well, before we get into the regular session of our meeting, I wanted to just take an opportunity to express to all of you here, as well as all of our citizens that are viewing at home, as you all are keenly aware by now, that we've had two tragic incidents that occurred in our city over the last several weeks. And on behalf of myself, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the City Council members, we want to send out a heartfelt condolences to both the Brown family and the Chapman family. We're deeply saddened by the recent events that occurred in our fine city, and we want the community to know as much as possible about what's happening in the aftermath of these two incidents. So, at this time, I want to ask our police chief, Ed Hargus. Chief, you're in here somewhere. Would you please come to the lectern and provide us with an update about the ongoing investigative process?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
The Virginia State Police are currently conducting independent criminal investigations into these incidents. These investigations are going to determine the facts and circumstances for each incident as well. Once the state police completes their investigations, the findings will be presented to the Commonwealth Attorney for their review to determine as to whether or not to pursue any type of criminal charges. At this point, the investigation being conducted by the state police is confidential. This means that information gathered by the state police is not available to the mayor, the council, the Portsmouth Police Department, or the general public. In the meantime, the Portsmouth Police Department has initiated an administrative investigation into both incidents. The administrative investigation is a critical review of each incident to determine if the officers involved followed proper police procedure and department policy. However, at the request of the state police, and in order to prevent any type or any appearance of influence over the criminal investigation, the administrative investigations are currently on hold at the request of the state police. Once their investigations are complete and they're turned over to the Commonwealth Attorney, they will then give the authority to the Portsmouth Police Department to move on with the administrative investigative process.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. At this time, I do want to ask for your patience while the state police are performing these investigations that are underway. We're all concerned about what's going on, not only here in Portsmouth, but what's happening nationally, and it is our job to get these things right and make sure we're doing what's in the best interest of all of our citizens. So, at this time, again, I think it is paramount that we come together and make sure that these type of things are handled in decency and in order, justice is served, we support one another, and move on as a people. So, again, thank you, Chief, for that update, and we just thought it was important that prior to starting this meeting, that we at least notify you of where we are and the things we can and cannot discuss and talk about in this investigation. So, with that, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. 15-171, Presentation. Presentation of Special Appellations to Newly Appointed Board and Commission Members. When I call your name, if you're in the audience, if you would please join the Vice Mayor at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. Mr. Vernon Tillage. And I'm going to call names of those I'm not sure, because we have some people out in the four area. Mr. DeAndre Barnes. Is he here? Rebecca Lars. John Ruben Robbins Jr. Kimberly Wimbush. Margaret Winley. Wilbert Allen. Annette Alan Santos. Gary Waters. Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to say on behalf of all the members of council, you all know that one of the most important jobs that the City Council does is make selections from the applications from citizens to serve as volunteers on many of our boards and commissions. That is usually the first route to public service for many of us. Almost all of us on the City Council have served on some of these boards and commissions before we were actually elected, and that's where the grunt work actually gets done. A lot of things that get to our agenda come through these boards and commissions. At this time, I'd like you to just introduce yourself on which commission you're on, and Ms. Ridenhour, maybe you would like to sum it up for the group.
My name is Vernon Tillage, and I'm on the Downtown Design Committee.
My name is Tanya Street, and I'm on the Museum of Fine Arts Committee or Commission.
I'm, excuse me, Linda Ridenhour, and I'm on the Tidewater Community College Board of Directors. Just finished my orientation today with the Board of Directors. It's going to be an exciting adventure.[627.41][627.41](Laughter). My passion is education, and to be at this level and hear about what the four different Tidewater Community Colleges are doing for young people is exciting to me. And, of course, I've been a teacher, been on school board, and so I could talk up here forever.[648.16][648.16](Laughter).
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. I encourage all citizens to take a look at the City of Portsmouth webpage. On the City Council page, you will see boards and commissions and what vacancies are open. We're always looking for smart volunteers. Thank you.
Sometimes Ms. Ridenhour is proud when I make this statement that she was the mayor's teacher. I don't know if you're proud tonight, but I want to throw it out there anyway, so, in case you want to run for mayor, I just done it in for you.[693.12][693.12](Laughter). Good to see you, Ms. Ridenhour. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have the opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 15-172. Public hearing to solicit citizen comments on the annual action plan. Members of council, I have no registered speakers for this item. Ladies and gentlemen, if there's anyone in the audience or in our lobby that would like to speak on this specific item but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on the annual action plan. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. 15-173. A, public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for FY 2015-16. B, public hearing to consider the annual operating budget that establishes or increases the tax rate on real property and rates on building, engineering, and ambulance fees and permits, and includes proposed rate changes to take effect on July 1st, 2015. And C, public hearing on recommended 2016 through '20 capital improvement program. Ladies and gentlemen, we have quite a few speakers this evening. I will be calling two names at a time. We will handle each public hearing separately. For public hearing A, our first speaker is Mr. Joel Rubin.
Mayor Wright, members of the Portsmouth City Council, my name is Joel Rubin, and I am the Chairman of the Board of the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. And in that capacity, I want to thank the city for its past and ongoing support of our operations, while also telling you why we believe our institution remains worthy of your and the citizens' continued backing. This past Friday night during our annual induction weekend, I ran into Jonathan Pick at the hall on High Street. He's a schoolteacher during the week in Prince William County, but on the weekends, he works in the county's tourism bureau. Well, every weekend but the last one in April, because for the past 15 years, Jonathan has come to Portsmouth for our Hall of Fame induction, and he tells others in Woodbridge where he lives about the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, urging them to travel here too. This past Saturday night at the induction itself, along with Jonathan, there were three tables of people from Chesterfield County wearing badges with the word "Grubby" on it. They were in Portsmouth, many of them staying at the Renaissance Hotel to support their friend and neighbor, inductee Johnny Grubb, who played 16 years in the major leagues, winning a World Series with the Detroit Tigers in 1984. Ben Wallace, Angela Euclid, and four other coaches, players, and a sports writer joined Johnny in the class of 2015. Mr. Wallace really moved the crowd, as the mayor knows, because he sat next to him, talking about growing up as one of 11 children in Alabama, earning a scholarship to play basketball at Virginia Union, then returning to Richmond after his 17-year All-Star career in the NBA to open a gym for underprivileged children, where he and his wife are raising their three children. That's in Richmond. Indeed, every April and throughout the tourist, summer tourist season, hundreds of people come to Portsmouth, many for the first time in their lives because of the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. It generates tremendous media coverage in Virginia and elsewhere. I'm in PR, take it from me, that is great free publicity. That was the vision of the founders 43 years ago, and one that the city shared when it agreed to be our partner in this endeavor. A major reason that beautiful structure and engaging galleries came to life 10 years ago this past Saturday. The Virginia Sports Hall of Fame has expanded its mission over the years to become more than a tourist attraction. It has become a leader in education, creating math and phys ed-oriented programs based on the state standards of learning objectives. 20,000 youngsters throughout Virginia have taken advantage of that asset, and they are available free of charge, thanks to private philanthropy to every child in the city of Portsmouth. Both Dr. Fiona Nichols, Director of Math Education in Portsmouth, and Dr. Patricia Fisher, the past interim superintendent, praised the hall's programs because they say they, quote, "greatly enhance students' mathematical skills." But let me address our longstanding financial partnership with the city. Because City Council voted unanimously in 2003 to provide $500,000 in annual operating support, the Hall of Fame was able to secure construction financing. Indeed, the loan approval was contingent on that commitment. Since then, multiple city councils have made sure that the Hall of Fame remains in the budget, even though the annual subsidy has been reduced to $350,000. The Hall of Fame, in other words, has already absorbed a 30% reduction. Replacing that sum year after year is impossible, meaning either the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame will cease to exist, or it will go elsewhere. Yes, the Hall of Fame will close without your support, leaving a big gap on High Street. Rather than kill the Hall of Fame, our staff and board would like to collaborate with the city, as we are doing with the school system, more than ever. Why? Because we want to realize the full potential of the Hall of Fame for Portsmouth, its visitors, its children, and those Virginia athletes from Tidewater to Richmond to Roanoke to Fairfax, who are working diligently as we speak to have their names enshrined in that building on High Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. And that was a well-organized Hall of Fame banquet the other night, and appreciate the professionalism, and as always, it is touching to hear all of those athletes and coaches talk about the different things that got them to where they are and the people that they think. And you're right, Ben Wallace did an outstanding job.
And there are many more great athletes ready to come into our Hall of Fame too here in Portsmouth.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Rubin.
Hi, Bill.
The Sports Hall of Fame, Virginia's Sports Hall of Fame, y'all doing some different things there too, just not a museum attraction. You're hosting events. Can you elaborate on that? Because those things are important, because people always want to know, well, what are you doing to help yourself?
Well, we have special events that bring guests in from across the community. We even book it for weddings and other events, so we're doing everything we can to bring in more revenue to the Hall of Fame. I mean, we realize that a lot of attractions across Hampton Roads and here in Portsmouth aren't drawing as many visitors as they want. That's why we've expanded our mission to do more education and to bring in more events. And so, you know, we're working hard to bring in money, but, you know, we feel like the Hall of Fame is a landmark in the state of Virginia. People know it's in Portsmouth. It's not in Norfolk, it's not in Virginia Beach, it's not in Richmond, it's here. And we think that this is one of the institutions that really brings a lot of credit to Portsmouth, and the fact that the city has got behind it to make sure it got built and is keeping it open. Thank you. Dr. Woodick, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Rubin, could you provide the council with the budget for the Sports Hall of Fame and also for all of the athletes that have been enshrined? Do any of them contribute back in the form of donations to the Sports Hall of Fame? If that's the case, can you include that with your report also?
We'll be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council. It looks like we've got ourselves into a financial quagmire, okay? I know that money's tight, and there's a lot of work we've got to do, okay? What I have here is a jail cost report, fiscal year 2014. These are actual facts, okay? They're not something that was made up, they're facts. What I'd like to tell you right now, in fiscal year 2014, we brought into the city of Portsmouth on jail per diem, $1,099,876. Weekender fees, we brought in $20,000. Prisoner upkeep fees, $45,000. DNA samples, $600. Jail security payments, $1,400, for a total of $1,166,876. Now, just with the inmate labor alone was $950,000, which gives us a total of $2,116,876. I have not cost the taxpayers a million dollars, I've saved the taxpayers $2 million. Now, page two. Hampton Roads Regional Jail is bleeding this city dry. They've got plenty of money. They lost their federal inmates due to their own negligence and their arrogance. We shouldn't have to foot that bill. Now, what it costs per day for a bid is $58.08. We have 250 bids, we don't need but 200. We need to get rid of 50 bids. We'd save a million dollars right off the bat. Now, cost to the city for these 250 bids is $5,299,800. Now, back in 2007, 2008, City Council voted to give per diem to Hampton Roads Regional Jail. When I send an inmate from our jail, where we're supposed to be getting the per diem, and that goes to Hampton Roads Regional Jail, they get the 5808 for the bid, and they get $8 per diem per day, per inmate. Now, you figure 250 inmates, times $8 a day, times 365 days, is $730,000 that we're giving to Hampton Roads Regional Jail as a gift. It can be reversed. All it takes is a motion, a second, and vote on it, and we're $730,000 richer. Now, the financial shape we're in right now, I don't see why we can't do that, and I'm not expecting you to do it tonight. Don't take just my word for it. It's fact, I can produce the paperwork, okay? Now, being said with that is, the total monies we're giving Hampton Roads Regional Jail in, just in fiscal year 2014, is $6,029,800, okay? Now, what I can do, there's been some controversy about I won't send inmates over to Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Not going to as long as they're keeping the per diem. What I can do is I'm willing to meet you halfway. You want to leave my employees' supplement alone, and you want to reverse the per diem where it stays here in the city, because the taxpayers are paying for this? It's my job to protect the taxpayers, whether it's physically, financially, or whatever. It's my job to protect the taxpayers. You reverse this per diem, and I'll start sending inmates to Hampton Roads Regional Jail, because it won't cost y'all a penny to do it. It won't cost the taxpayers a penny. I'm not saying I'm not willing to send them over there, I'm just not willing to give Hampton Roads Regional Jail $730,000 of the taxpayers' money. So, this being said, I'm going to meet y'all halfway. You just remember, my employees come first. The deal is, you've got to leave their supplement alone, and you've got to reverse the per diem, and I'll work with you 100%. It's not rocket science, it's pretty cut and dry stuff. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Let me just ask you, Sheriff. We were, it seems like we were at our 250 obligation up to around 2010, and since 2010, we have not met that obligation. Can you explain?
Yes, sir, I most certainly can. The arrests are going down, okay? Don't hold me to this exact figure, I happened to look at it today. I want to say in 2008, it was like 12,000 arrests that year, and 2010, it was 8,000 arrests. The arrests are going down, and the reason being is, it takes so long to book someone. A lot of police officers would rather write somebody a summons than physically arrest them. They go and take them into booking, it takes four hours to book them. The sheriff's office does them 30, 45 minutes sometimes, because that's what we did for years, and we're not knocking the police department. You have to understand, the PD has to work the street, and if they're making arrests, they have to come in and do the booking. And most of them don't do enough booking to keep it up here exactly. You have to do this day after day after day to get good at it, and a lot of them don't do it enough to get that good at it, and it takes time. And there's a way to trim the fat there. I've got three or four different offers I can make y'all, where you can save about a million dollars a year on each offer. And anytime that you want to get with me and talk to me, I'm open for suggestions, and I can give you suggestions where you can save a million dollars on every category.
So, the arrests have been going down since 2010, and that contributes to why you're not meeting the obligation that we agreed to.
Correct.
Can I ask you, how many prisoners or inmates do we have here in our local jail?
In our local jail right now, we've got, I want to say, 300, and I could be wrong, I didn't check it today, I want to say like 340, maybe 350.
340, 350.
Right, and if we were to take those inmates out of Portsmouth City Jail and close the jail, and send them to Hampton Roads Regional, it would cost an additional $11 million to hold them. We don't have that kind of money.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. You realize that the burden that the city is under when we form an agreement with four other localities to make this regional jail work, and all of the things that we all signed up in the agreement to do to make sure each city honors its piece of the pie for this thing to work, you realize that that's costing us about $600,000 a year for the beds that are not being occupied there, and then for you to keep them here, it's costing us another $400,000. So, there's a million dollars there that we're having to ask questions about as to why is this taking place?
Well, it's going to cost...
I understand you've, let me finish. I understand you do some mathematics and calculations to justify why you continue to ignore our agreement with the other cities, and that is what?
The reason for that is the other cities aren't in the financial bind we're in, okay? Norfolk's got plenty of money. I wish we had the money that Norfolk had, we're landlocked here.
So, because we're in a financial bind, you decide not to send the prisoners there?
No, it's not just that, you'd also lose all these fees here. You'd lose $2 million right here, plus the $730,000. Y'all are forgetting about these fees. $2,116,876 you're going to lose. I mean, it's pretty simple math. Anybody can figure that one out. And like I say, if you need to get with me and look at the forms up close and personal, I'm willing to do that.
And your deal again is, your offer...
Like I say, leave my employees alone and their supplements, okay? You know how I am about my employees, I will fight for my employees on a heartbeat.
Understood.
Okay? And number two, we reverse the decision to keep the supplement, I mean, the per diem in the city of Portsmouth, which belongs to the taxpayers, not Hampton Roads Regional Jail. We got a deal, I'll start sending people out there.
Okay. And before you take your seat, the supplement, can you explain to us what your definition of what the supplement is?
Yes, it's a supplement that the city provides to our employees. Where it works in the state of Virginia with the sheriff's office, every deputy is paid the same amount. I think... I think now it's like $31,200 and some odd dollars. Y'all give like $2161 to each deputy here. Chesapeake gives $14,000 to their deputies. That's why we're so much lower paid than Chesapeake. That's why a lot of people want to leave the sheriff's office to go to Chesapeake Sheriff's Office or Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, because they pay so much more. But then when the tolls came in, they lose that money paying the tolls.
My question for the supplement was dealing with the way it's dispersed amongst your employees. And I recognize that you'll defend all of your employees for whatever it takes. But how do you distribute that money? Because I understand that there are some deputies and some folks in your office that are getting $30,000 to $40,000 worth of that money, and some of them are not getting any. Is everybody getting a supplement from the city? We give you money, we can look on your payroll and see everyone is getting... Because my definition of that supplement is to try to bring the salary that the state says they're going to pay up to a competitive range, so we can attract good deputies within our department. Not to pick and choose which one you want to get, $10,002 or which one you want to get. And you're saying you don't do that. Everybody across the board is making the same amount?
You have to go by grade and rank, too. In other words, if you, let's say you're a deputy that's been here 10 years, you're going to get more supplement than a deputy that's been here a year. If you're a sergeant, you're going to get more than a deputy's going to get. And that's where it works in every business and every department.
So, if I've got a deputy and both of them have been here five years, if I look at their pay, both of them should be making the same city supplement?
Give or take.
Okay, give or take. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Vice Mayor has a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a math question. I've had a hard time with this, but... So, I'm going back to these 50 prisoners. So, if I understand you correctly, the 50 prisoners that you are keeping in the Portsmouth City Jail, you get $8 times 50 times 365 days is $146,000 a year that we get to keep?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they're in the Portsmouth City Jail.
And the other 200 and some that's at the regional jail, that would also stop, which would bring you $730,000.
Okay, don't confuse this yet. I just want to talk about these 50 men.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's all men, because there are only men in your jail, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Are there any women in your jail?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, so men and women. So, if I take those 50, so those 50 people, bring the city of Portsmouth $146,000 a year in Commonwealth of Virginia supplement, does it change the cost of operating the Portsmouth City Jail in either numbers of deputies, or food, or heat, and air, or whatever, janitorial services?
If you lay off...
If you take, if you get rid of those 50 prisoners?
Let's say if, even if you laid off 50 deputies, you're still going to have the heat, you're still going to have the maintenance on the building, you're still going to have the food contract, you're still going to have a medical contract, you still have the laundry contract. All that stays the same. And sometimes, like with medical, when we start to get too low, the medical costs go up.
Do you pay a per capita rate for food and laundry, or is it like you pay a flat fee for up to...
Well, it is a flat fee up to a certain amount, and if it goes above that, it could go up a little bit more. If it goes below, then we have to pay more. So, we have to give an estimate about how many is going to be in there.
So, if the 50 people are in Portsmouth City Jail, we get $146,000, we're still paying the regional jail for them. If those same 50 people go to the regional jail, we're still paying the regional jail, we've lost the 146.
Absolutely. We're still paying for the bids, no matter what.
No, either way.
That was a deal, that deal was struck 25 years ago, 15 years before I became sheriff. I had nothing to do with it. That we pay for 250 bids whether we use them or not. Well, back, like the mayor said, years ago, when the arrests were high, the 250 bids wasn't too bad of an idea. We barely filled 200 bids, but we're paying for all those other bids. We need to work a deal with Hampton Roads Regional Jail and get rid of 50 bids. Chesapeake just came in, they can buy the bids, or we can work a deal out with Hampton Roads Regional Jail that if we send somebody over to per diem, subtract that amount of the per diem from the cost of those bids. It's taxpayers' money.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more questions?
And of the 50 inmates that you're keeping here, how many deputies do you need to be able to maintain 50 deputies here in the region, in the local jail? What is this state ratio? Is it five per one?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look and see what the ratio calls.
So, if it's 40, that means it's roughly about eight deputies?
We're right there at the, at the standard, national standard.
At the national standard. So, those 40 people here is causing us eight additional jobs here. And if we move that, then that would help us from a relief standpoint, but it would allow you to use those deputies somewhere else, or do something else to help the city?
We still have a certain amount of floors on our jail to maintain. Whether you have 100 inmates in the lockup, or you've got two of them in the lockup, you have to have a deputy on that floor.
Gotcha.
So, I mean, it's kind of hard to say X number of inmates, because we have eight floors to the jail. So, that's going to take eight deputies, one on each floor, not counting the watch commanders, the runners, so on and so forth.
Got you.
All right, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. Moody.
Thanks for clearing up some of these numbers. Another number that's been mentioned quite frequently is that you're over the state allocation for the number of employees. Now, I know the courthouse, the new courthouse, I believe council agreed to 18 additional employees to, for the increased security needs there.
Absolutely.
Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir, and it's pretty, pretty simple, it's kind of cut and dry. The comp board basically said, "We didn't tell the city of Portsmouth to build a Taj Mahal courthouse." Okay? You want it manned, you pay for it. They're only going to give us X number of deputies to man the courthouse, the rest you have to pay for, along with the scanner techs. Because under state code, deputies do not work scanners, the comp board does not pay for it, they don't even recognize scanners. So, if you want scanners, the city has to pay for it. If you want the additional deputies, the city has to pay for it. I mean, it depends unless you want to start shutting the courthouse down.
Also, beyond expenditures and costs of the courthouse and the jail, your deputies provide a lot of city services?
Yes, sir.
That would otherwise go lacking. Do you have a monetary, ballpark monetary value?
Yes, sir, just in 2014, we saved the city over $950,000. And I mean, that's documented, it's not a problem. But you have to understand, we do a lot of work for the city. And it's true, you might have two deputies' positions there where you're paying maybe $34,000 apiece, okay? So, you're looking at $68,000, but we just saved you almost a million, so that's a pretty good deal.
I would think so. Thanks, Sheriff.
My book is a pretty good deal.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
So, to summarize, the state comp board says you need 161 deputies to do your function here in the city of Portsmouth.
Yes, sir.
And right now, our budget has you at 189 deputies.
Well, I don't, I don't know what...
Sorry, let me finish the question, Sheriff. And so, the difference in 161, which the state says that's all they're going to pay for, and the 189, are all of those folks working and doing work for the city of Portsmouth and working on what, trash trucks, or...
Yeah, well, the deputies don't work on trash trucks, the inmates do. The deputies are not working on trash trucks, no, the deputies are working in the courthouse, they're working... Now, we have work crews, and they have to be, have to have a deputy with them at all times, unless you're out on work release. If you're like on, you know, you're working a private job, and you're like an honor-type inmate, then you can go out on job work, and you have to come back and spend the night in the jail, which is the work center.
You've got an honor system for the inmates?
Yes, they're called trustees. In other words, they have to go through a rigorous background to find out if they're eligible to do this type of work. There are certain jobs we won't let them work at. We don't let them work at barber shops, okay? And I'm not knocking barber shops, don't get me wrong. It's just it's too easy for them to obtain contraband working in a barber shop.
How many trustees do you have?
How many trustees on work release? We have about 15.
15 trustees.
I think it was 15. I think two of them are getting out this week.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have another?
Sheriff, when we were going through the construction of the Taj Mahal courthouse, as you called it, when we were sued to build the new courthouse by the judges, this council, I know Mr. Moody will recall, we hired, the council did, not you, Sheriff Lantain, who had just retired from Virginia Beach after a pretty lengthy career, to come in and be a consultant for us, to tell us how many deputies we would need for this new courthouse, and worked a lot with the architect and with you. I recall that we kind of, we hoped that you did what he said.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you? I don't know.
Well, almost, we don't have as many deputies as he called for. We're actually, I think, five or six below what he said was the minimum standard that we needed over there. But I'm not pushing it.
I remember a big to-do about that at the time. We didn't agree at the time.
And we have a lot of deputies that wear more than one hat, you know? Just because they, they take a break from working the TV room, or this, that, and the other, then they go work, you know, a station over here, or whatever the case may be. They don't get that many breaks. I mean, law says you have to give them a certain amount of breaks in an eight-hour period. But my deputies work for every dime they get.
So, you're pretty sure you're under what that recommendation was at the time?
Yes, ma'am, I think we're five under the recommendation, which I'm not squawking over that, it's just, we just have to do more with less.
All right, thank you. One last thing before you go, Sheriff. Back on this supplement again, and I know you don't know all your folks' salary and how you disperse that, but let's just use yourself. How much does the state comp board say you should be paying? Do you know?
I don't even know.
You don't know? And do you know how much you make?
About 130, 135.
About 130, 135. And the state comp board says that a sheriff should make $110,000 a year.
It's all based on the per capita.
Understand, but the state comp board says, for your job, you should be making 110, and you're making 130.
Right, I could go to work...
Is it safe to assume that, I know you can go to work somewhere else, but yeah, right, but it's safe to assume that if the state comp board says you should be making 110,000, and you're paying yourself 135, that other $25,000 is coming from the local assessment that we give you to disperse out amongst all your deputies?
No, because I give my deputies raises before I give, I haven't had a raise in, I think, about eight years.
Right, but if the state says you should only be at 110, and you just say you're at 135, then that...
Well, I think the state says I should be at 142, because my counterpart in Chesapeake makes about 180.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Stephen Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, as you approach the podium, we're going to give the deputies an opportunity to leave the room before you start.
I take it they think he's worth every penny there, Mayor?
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Steve Johnson with the Independence Center. Appreciate the opportunity to continue serving the disability community in Portsmouth during this current fiscal year. It's been more than 30 years that we've received funding through Portsmouth and all the other cities in Southampton Roads, and we're looking forward to continuing that. We've helped, just nine months through the fiscal year, we've already helped over 500 people with disabilities to improve their independent living status, we've helped people get jobs. We've worked with about 20 people, and we've helped to get two of them out of nursing facilities and back into the community where they can have a better quality of life. We've spent more than 500 hours of time on community services. We've worked a lot with the homelessness coalition, and we've, we actually had our annual meeting at the Sports Hall of Fame facility, and the mayor spoke at that meeting. And we've helped people get housing modifications, jobs, and just basic training and counseling. And we're just here to thank you for including us in the proposed CDBG budget, and we hope we can continue doing some good things in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They ain't going to wait, they're waiting on the elevator, keep going.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sylvester Askins.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and members of the council. My name is Sylvester Askins, and I am here also to represent the Independence Center. I want to speak briefly on how the center has...
Can you speak into the mic, sir?
I'm sorry, has affected my life. I am both a participant and an employee at ECI. I became a participant in April of 2013, when I assigned my ticket to work to the center's employment program. The Ticket to Work program is a social security-sponsored work incentive that gives disabled individuals who wish to test their ability to return to work, the opportunity to do so while keeping their benefits. Shortly after being hired full-time in October 2013, I was diagnosed with a second potentially failing disease, and the executive director and management team at ECI worked with me through this very difficult time in my life, and allowed me to work a schedule that was best for me. The Independence Center has truly made a difference in my life, and has afforded me the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of disabled individuals living in Portsmouth and throughout the region. I am grateful to the Independence Center for all they've done, and I look forward to a continued relationship with the center for many years to come, and we thank you for your continued financial support.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Good night.
Mr. Nelson Velez.
We'll come back to him.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to Mr. Velez.
Ms. Rebecca Barclay. We'll give him a chance. Mr. Steve Carroll.
Evening, Mayor, members of staff. Steve Carroll, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm going to be straight and to the point. Our budget is a challenge. No doubt, some things will have to be cut, but it's interesting that the school board, according to several members of council, is off limits. Right here, I have a cover letter dated August 13, 2013, from John Rowe, the city manager apprising city council of a grand jury report. No excuses for not knowing what the grand jury was doing after that point. I have another letter here, addressed to the mayor, as well as others, from Mrs. Swindell, dated May 2, 2012, when Mrs. Swindell exposed the skullduggery of the school board. And I call it skullduggery, and that's being kind. In spite of a number of people coming up here pointing out what the school board, or grand jury reported as a $52 million, five-year misuse of the privileges of getting money from the city by the school board, funny, nobody on council mentioned that John Rowe told you in this February 13, 2014, report that it was $92 million over eight years. Facts, not opinion. Receipt after receipt, voucher after voucher, solid proof that the school board was violating state law by not returning funds from a prior year like they were required to do, and spending that money in the new year, totally against state law and code. According to this report, the school board took $7 million of a $17 million surplus and put it in OPEB, when they were only required to put $1 million in there. So, we can automatically decide that the schools need $1 million less for the next several years, right off the bat, can't we? Abuse of funds, the school board budget... Abuse of funds. The school board budgeted $3.9 million in 2010, '11 for electricity, only spent 2.4. 5.6 budgeted in 2012, only spent 3.2. Budgeted 4.3 and spent 2.4 in 2013. Budgeted 4.5 million for electricity. In this report, it says that's almost double what they actually needed. Where did all that extra money go? A purchase order for $1 million to pay for electricity dated June 27, 2013, three days before the end of the fiscal year. For a school board or a school system that's so desperately short on cash, how did they end up with $1 million to spare $3 before the end of the budget year? Want to answer that one? Markey?
Mr. Carroll, if you continue to make those type of comments, I'm going to cut your time off.
Excuse me, Mr. Whitaker.
Okay.
Let me, let me just say this, Mr. Mayor, he's, he's just, he's just acting within his ignorance, so I don't, he can't help it.
This voucher shows that $1 million was authorized by the finance director to be spent four months after the end of the previous year. Long story short, our school board has a lot to be accountable for, and they have not, have not adequately accounted for where the money was spent. And I want to praise Mrs. Swindell for her diligence and her duty to her job, as well as Mr. Rowe. She's the one that exposed what was going on with this school board. And it's a shame that her efforts were denigrated by two members of this city council in work sessions. And I do apologize. You know what? I shouldn't have said that.
Good night.
There's no need to apologize. You're just acting within your social condition, and so I don't even worry about it.
We're going to try to get Velez. Members, if I can ask y'all to, if, please, we're going to have a long night. We're going to have a very long night. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk. Ma'am?
What's the sergeant at arms?
Would you remove her? Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, you need to leave. Okay, take her out. Madam Clerk?
Is Mr. Sylvester Askins in the audience? Did Mr. Askins come into the room? Mr. Nelson Velez, is he in the room?
Mr. Velez. There's Mr. Velez.
Good evening, sir.
Vice Mayor, council. What happens when the interest of expanding government spending escalates to the point that taxes imposed on their citizens and their families begin to inflict damage? What happens when the cost of government becomes so great that the sheer, sheer weight begins to collapse on itself? I want to commend the body, this body, for resisting the urge to pass along the crippling tax hikes to the homeowners and the businesses. All of these people, all of our citizens, have endured crippling tax burdens. It's been a very difficult economy for the last several years, and increasing that burden would just make it that much more difficult. The loss of good productive citizens and businesses do not improve the future prospects of this city. Higher taxes would just accelerate the exodus of both established families and businesses. The school budget has been a major engine for some of the escalating costs. It is the growth, the spending in that area that has driven the cost to unsustainable levels. Have there been productive outcomes to this cost? Students in, in our schools have not escalated to match the costs going into the school system. Has the quality of our education improved? How has the money been spent? Have they been good stewards of the fruits of our labor? For eight years, there has been a systematic scheme to defraud our citizens to the tune of $93 million. It even had a name in honor of our previous superintendent, the Stuckwich Initiative. We had a grand jury convene on this. The actions were resisted for this kind of action for eight months, when we had citizens led by the Taxpayer Alliance and by the Portsmouth Tea Party, and we were able to demonstrate the overwhelming scope of the corruption. The school board actions were condemned as illegal and in violation of state code. We're a small community. Imagine what it would mean to all of us had the $93 million remained in the, in the free market. That's what really drives in America innovation and wealth, is allowing the fruits of the labor to be kept by the citizens. If you reward good behavior, that, that behavior will be returned in spades. It always happens. You have tax cuts and you cut spending, you have an explosion of economic activity that actually will result in greater revenue to the city. This has been done in our history. It's not an opinion or historical, I mean, it's not an opinion. It's based on historical fact. It's not a theory. It's based on our own history. And I know last time I did speak of this. We were suffering in a, under a recession in 1920s. In the 1919, in the 1920s, we had the tax cut, and it resulted in a great explosion of economic activity. Did the same thing under John F. Kennedy, and also did the same thing under Ronald Reagan, the same results. I commend you for not cutting the taxes. I mean, not raising the taxes, but I, I would like to look at the spending. And I want to go back to the school. We have a situation where administrative, administratively, the, the numbers of administrators in the school is huge. In Virginia Beach, it's .82 per 1,000 students. In Portsmouth, it's 4.2. That's a 500% increase. I can imagine how much an administrator costs. Just reducing it to Virginia Beach levels, which has a greater population, would save us millions and millions of dollars. We can save our police programs. We could save our school situation with our teachers. We could save Christmas. I will ask you, save Christmas. Let's not have any Grinches. Please. Look at the administrative costs. Look at the administrative, and if that's the fat, if that's where it's contained, then we can save the city and we can prosper if we cut the fat in the proper places. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Velez. Mr. Velez, I just want to, Mr. Velez, you can come back up to him. I just want to share with you, you and I are never going to agree on this issue.
I know.
And you, the Tea Party and all the rest of you, we're never going to agree on what it takes to educate our children here. And every one of these children are our children.
Yes.
Okay? And because we oppose the tax hike does not mean we're aligned with you and your line of thinking. I oppose the tax hike because we agree that every dollar we spend should be accounted for, and we should make sure it's being used to the best use, as we are the overseers of taxpayers' dollars. And once I'm convinced that our administration, our staff, and everyone here is doing that, if we need to brave, come to the public and raise taxes, I'll be more than happy to do that. But my job today is to make sure that we're doing that. So, please don't misunderstand what my vote was and why we took the action. We will never agree on that issue. And when it comes to those children, those 15,000 kids here in Portsmouth, we are not compared to Virginia Beach. We're not compared to Williamsburg or any of those other places. You guys keep coming up here and twisting all that data and bringing it up here and making it sound good. I don't care how you put that on a packet. You can't put lipstick on a pig, sir. All right?
Yes.
I'm going to give you a chance to respond because I asked you to say that. You got something you want to say?
Well, Mayor, I think there is a lot of common ground between you and me, and I do agree, we won't agree on everything. But I do believe one thing, that you do care about the people in this city, and you don't want to harm them. And we all can agree that we want a prosperous city. That's where we could come together. How we get there, I know we'll disagree on it. But as, as much as we can, I hope we can stand shoulder to shoulder as long as, and as much as we can in, in most situations.
And those kids are going to have Christmas.
And those kids, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Rebecca Barclay.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to share some information with you about a critical public safety and public health issue, one that is a legislative mandate at both state and local levels. The Code of Virginia, Section 3.2-6546, requires that municipalities provide animal shelters to protect citizens from animals running at large and that may carry the deadly disease rabies. Portsmouth has no municipal shelter, and for the past several decades has depended on Portsmouth Humane Society, a private nonprofit shelter to provide these services to all the citizens of Portsmouth regardless of race, creed, or level of income. In return, the city of Portsmouth has offered a chronically inadequate level of funding to cover the costs of housing, vetting, and caring for all the stray, abused, abandoned, and homeless animals in the city. In any given year, 85% of the animals housed and cared for at PHS are city-owned animals. However, city funding covers only 40% to 45% of the shelter's budget. In short, PHS has been subsidizing city services for many years and has been forced to fundraise continuously to care for animals that the city contracts for boarding. The existing five-year contract between the city of Portsmouth and Portsmouth Humane Society will expire on June 30 of this year. Last November, the Portsmouth Police Department, which houses the annual control function of the city, approached PHS about negotiating a new five-year contract that would address funding shortfalls and safety and health-related needs under the current contract. In January, Portsmouth Humane Society representatives presented the police department with a proposal that asks for increased funding more in line with national averages and better protection for shelter employees who must care for the city's animals. According to 2009 statistics compiled by the Humane Society of the United States, United States communities spend approximately $8 per person for animal shelters. Given the 2013 census data for the city of Portsmouth, 97,450 people, our city should expect to spend $779,600 annually for this purpose. Allowing for demographic and regional variances and available resources, PHS requested $6 per capita for a total of $584,000 with a 2% escalation clause for years two through five of a new contract to cover inflation. This increased level of funding would satisfy not only the costs of caring for animals brought to the shelter through animal control, but also the provisions in the Code of Virginia specifying appropriate care, treatment, transportation, veterinary care, and spaying, neutering. The amount that Portsmouth Humane Society requested represents a 25% discount off the national average. The request for increased funding to satisfy a public safety and public health need has been denied, however. Further, additional demands have been placed on PHS to handle animals that pose a threat of serious injury to our staff. Over the past five years, our workers' compensation insurance premiums have more than doubled. What is most disturbing, however, is how little value seems to be placed on providing for a critical public safety and public health need that the city is legally obligated to provide to all citizens. Portsmouth is allocating only $3.34 per citizen, less than half the 2009 national average. Don't the citizens of Portsmouth, all the citizens of Portsmouth, deserve better? I encourage my fellow citizens to voice their concerns to council about these critical public safety issues, and ask that a more sensible and equitable contract be presented to PHS to provide these necessary mandated services to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeremy Coiman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. My name is Jerry Coiman. I'm a fairly new citizen to the city of Portsmouth. I came to visit Portsmouth back in 1983. As a matter of fact, I spent one night at the old Holiday Inn downtown, walked around, and fell in love with the city, mainly because it made me think of my home country. I'm from the Netherlands. I saw some old buildings, historical aspects, and I really liked it. As fate would have it, I would not move to the city of Portsmouth until December of 2013. And as a good citizen, I transferred all my property, personal property, of course, to the city records, bought some real estate. When I got my tax bill, I nearly fell out of my chair. And needless to say, the honeymoon was over. I want to commend you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council, to hold the line on increasing taxes. It's also my experience and understanding, if you want a city to be economically viable and attract business and people, it's not going to happen with tax rates just off the charts compared to the surrounding localities. I know it's painful to make cuts. I've been self-employed for nearly 30 years. I'm a builder developer. When the bottom fell out in 2008, 2009, without embellishing, I probably had to make 30% cuts, not in discretionary spending, but in real spending. It's painful, but it's doable. And again, I want to commend you for holding the line on taxes. To give you a couple of suggestions, like I said, I'm a newcomer. I'm just learning. I was aghast when I found out that this city of 97,000 people, and there's maybe a handful of people that play golf, do you know how much we've spent as a city on this golf course? If you add it all up, we're nearing $20 million. I would like to propose that we sell that place. We could probably sell it. We could probably sell it for 20 million, and with the current tax rate, that would generate $254,000 every year instead of sinking half a million dollars a year into the golf course. That's a gap of $750,000. Is it fair to the 96,000 people of the city that don't play golf, that really don't care about golf, to spend that type of money? We could spend that money on the schools. We could take that money, put it aside for capital improvements and the initial additional revenue from that place when it's privatized, put it in a general budget. I know we have other sacred cows, or maybe sacred horses, I should say. I lived on a farm in Punggol. You know, the first thing that went was the, the animals because they're expensive to keep. Do we really need to have an $80,000 horse in this city? I can hook you up with people in Punggol. They'll bring their horse, and they'll, they'll rent it. It'll cost you maybe a couple hundred dollars. They'll even mount a saddle for you. I know there's plenty of cops that can sit on it, as I saw tonight, and we're in business. We can save ourselves a lot of money. Last thing, and like I said, I'm just learning. I'll, I'll identify more things. I live on Washington Street, and I'm the chief bottle washer, and I stand there by the sink, and I have a perfect view of the bus stop. Why are we running these large buses that literally, and I'm not kidding you, a handful of people ride it, three, four people? I understand that there is some, some talk of... I understand that there is some talk of maybe getting new buses. Let's buy some smaller buses that are cheaper to buy, cheaper to maintain, cheaper to run. And again, I want to thank you for the time that you've given me, and I hope you take heed to the suggestions I've given you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ann Stewart?
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Ann Stewart. I live in 3,600 block of Lilac Drive. I do want you all to know that we said a prayer for you Sunday morning at church. Monumental Methodist prayed for our leaders and for our city, and I thought it was important that you knew that. My remarks to date are in connection with the City Manager Godfrey's recent letter that mentions the closing of Willet Hall. I am opposed to that closing. Closing arts venues and cutting arts funding are normally the first items to be cut during a shortfall. However, arts patrons dine out, shop, pay sales and meal taxes, and artists pay hotel fees and taxes. I believe that the citizens of Portsmouth should receive the best in cultural funding based on our tax rate. As president of Portsmouth Community Concerts, I am here tonight representing over six hundred dedicated concert members. PCCI has offered seventy-six seasons of family entertainment to the citizens of Portsmouth and hopes to continue. We want to try every way to inspire our students. Fourteen free student outreach offerings are proposed for next season, including seven hundred and fifty free tickets for Portsmouth Public School students for each of our concerts. This offering would not be available without ample seating at Willet Hall. When PCCI hosted students and faculty from Old Dominion University last Friday night, over one hundred choral and orchestral musicians occupied the stage simultaneously. This would have been nearly impossible at any other Tidewater venue. Shouldn't we seek additional programs and performances at Willet Hall, thus raising revenues to make it a self-sustaining venue rather than attempting to close a significant historic treasured venue? Have other proposals been made to the city regarding Willet Hall? If so, are those proposals being considered? I would ask that Willet Hall remain open. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mark Adolde Giotraski?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow citizens. I have some trepidation about speaking on this particular budget since the accounts in the media and the things that I've heard from council directly indicate that the budget you advertised is not the budget that you're currently discussing. And so this particular budget is never going to see the light of day in its current form. Therefore, I would ask that you schedule another public hearing for the real budget. But before that happens, you should have the decency to do what our former city manager did on March thirtieth and have an official presentation to the citizenry of that budget so that people can come back and talk about the real budget, not the pretend budget, not the bait-and-switch budget that we have tonight. I think the manager was courageous in laying out a budget that had a nineteen cent proposed, I'm sorry, seventeen cent proposed rate increase in it. It was realistic in terms of what he was proposing for you to fund, but the stomach among elected officials for tax increases is relatively small at every level of government. And to me, what you have to ask yourself is not whether you want to face public disapproval for recommending a tax increase, but rather whether you want to be leaders, whether you are there to fund essential services in the city, which include the schools, the schools being ten cents of that seventeen cent proposal Mr. Rowe put on the table, and to ensure that we have properly trained and properly-staffed first responder units in our city, and to ensure that if an emergency occurs like Hurricane Isabel or an exceptional season of snow plowing, that we don't dig into our reserve fund to try to meet those needs. Now, I heard from this chamber last night what you all discussed around the table. And I'm reminded that if you put the least skilled people in a room with all the components to build a nuclear weapon, they would eventually figure it out. And no fair with an engineer in the room. That would move it forward faster. But we don't have time for you all, who are essentially hobbyist legislators, hobbyist city officials. We do pay you, so I can't call you amateur. But there is a certain amateurishness about the discussion that took place last night. So we don't have time for you to throw that together. And what we get may look like the definition of a horse built by a committee, which is to say a camel. I think you need to be paying attention to what your professional staff is telling you about the considerations that went in to the formulation of the original budget. And for you to attempt this retooling in a circumspect and definitely a leisurely process, your budget is good until the end of this fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. Do not rush and put together a half-baked budget that we will have to live with for the next fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Giotraski.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for FY 2015-16. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register for this specific public hearing, you may come forward. Just as a reminder, if you come forward and you have previously signed up as a non-agenda speaker, by speaking at this time, you will relinquish your ability to speak as a non-agenda speaker. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Vice Mayor, Member of Council, I'll make this relatively quick. In talking to the sheriff after he spoke with you tonight, Mayor, there were several times that you spoke of obligation as it pertained to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The answer to that is I think the city has met its obligation continually. That contract was written about twenty years ago. It was signed to by the city managers of the various cities, four to be exact. The City of Portsmouth got a little bit of a break because they built it on our property. But the body of the contract, if you've read it, simply says that we guarantee that we'll pay for two hundred and fifty beds, whether we put a body in those beds or not. The sheriff's argument is this: About seven years ago, the council decided that the per diems that we were receiving for holding inmates in our jail would be transferred to the Hampton Roads City Jail, or the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. There is nothing in that contract that requires that. It's a little bit like staying at a nice motel, a hotel. The room's eighty dollars, and when you leave, you go by the desk and say, you know, I really enjoyed myself. Here's another ten dollars. The argument has been that by decreasing the number of inmates in our jail has no effect on the operating cost that we deal with over there. Our deputies, I remind you, are paid for by the state of Virginia. So every time that we move a prisoner and put him in Hampton Roads Regional Jail, we give them a tip. We give them an eight-dollar tip. It is not required. It is not a credit they should get. So what the sheriff is saying is if you want to put the inmates over there, fine, but make Hampton Roads Regional Jail give you a credit for the money they're receiving on the per diem. By giving away that money, we simply hurt ourselves in the operating cost of our own jail for the prisoners we have to keep. So, Mr. Mayor, I guess more importantly, I want the citizens to understand that, number one, the city is meeting its obligation, and it's not important whether there's a body in there. I may also add that when they were keeping federal prisoners at Hampton Roads Regional, before they lost them, they never came to the city and said, you know what? We're getting your money. We're getting eighty-six dollars a head for the federal prisoners, and we're putting them in your bed. So we want to give you that money back. That didn't happen. So now, here we are. It makes no business sense, and as you know, Mayor, I spent twenty-seven years in business, makes no business sense to shorten your revenue to give it to somebody else when it's not required. That's all I have to say. Y'all have a good night, and I hope it's short for you.
Thank you. Good night.
Sir, if you could give your name, please?
Todd Muttlow, of your enforcement. Was gonna say a whole lot tonight. I've been watching them, been at the meetings. We, as a society, need to stop living in the past. And I have a child that has two more years in his school district. And if we don't stop living about what the past boards have done and the city councils, you'll never get it straight. This school board has made mistakes, but it wasn't this school board. So I wish our citizens would stop throwing them under the front wheels of the bus, because there's enough room under that bus for all of us. We elected all these officials to these positions. If you don't like it, vote them out. This school board is half-new, I believe. Brand-new superintendent. If you continue to hammer them, what makes you going to position that we're going to have new, better people coming in place? Dr. Bracy, unless you've had a conversation with him face-to-face and talked to him and looked into his eyes, then you don't know and you don't understand. Give this man a chance. Stop trying to hammer this school board. There's enough mistakes for everybody that has gone around. Mr. Cherry, you said something I've been harping on for a long time. Don't tie this man's hand before his back. We have a lot of cleaning out to do, both within the city and within the school system. If you don't give Dr. Bracy a chance and his school board, then the only one that fails are us. This goes to all these citizens. We can't fix what happened eight years ago today. We can only move forward. I keep hearing we're living in the past, and we need to stop. I got, like I said, my child's got two more years in here. And I enjoy the STEM programs and the robotics and watching the kids, not just my kids, the young kids coming up. Keep hammering the school board. That's what you're there for. But you need to give this school board and this school system a chance. This is a brand-new set of people. Same thing. If we don't like what we got, then we need to vote them out. And if you don't, and we don't vote them out, and you still don't like them, we lie in the bed that we created. And that's, I can't say it any more clear than that. Enough of the blame game. We are grown adults. Some of us have skin still left in this game. Some of us don't have skin left in the school system at all, but you want to complain about it. I don't want to hear anymore. We need to grow up as a group of citizens in Portsmouth. And we need to grow up as board members on both boards. I fight for the schools because my kids are in it. If they're wrong, Dr. Bracy would tell you, I have no problem contacting him or any other school board members. Y'all can't fire me. I'm a parent and a resident, and I pay twenty-nine hundred dollars a year in taxes on my house. But in the end, our responsibility is to the citizens and our children first and foremost. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of Council, seeing no additional speakers coming forward on this item, this public hearing is closed. Item B, public hearing to consider the annual operating budget that establishes or increases the tax rate on real property and rates on buildings, engineering, and ambulance fees and permits, and includes proposed rate changes to take effect on July first. Our first speaker is Ms. Pat Simons. She's followed by Mr. Ron Evans.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Pat Simons. I'm here tonight as president of the Portsmouth Taxpayer Alliance. I had something all written, but once the invocation was said, I started scribbling through all this because I really appreciated that prayer and how she asked for prayers for this city and for each of you. And I thought, I need to look at this again and just be a little more kinder, because I got to tell you, I was just not, I thought I was going to get thrown out if I really say what I had written here.
You might.
And I may yet.
Yes, ma'am.
But at any rate, the taxpayer alliance just cannot, our citizens cannot afford increased taxes. We're already the highest in the region, and we just can't afford anymore. And we, and the fees that you're talking about increasing, I mean, those are, some of them are, you know, a hundred percent or two hundred percent in some of the fees that you've got proposed. So just kind of take a look at that and really, for once, just consider the people and how they're, you know, struggling. I mean, people just can't afford to continue to pay these high taxes. And as far as the work session, I did sit in here and I watched the work session. These chairs, by the way, were much more comfortable than those new ones you bought in there. And anyway, Mayor, when you said in the work session, "Our job is to ask where these layers are. It's costing us six and a half million. We need to know where it's going," talking about the sheriff, and then you went on to say, "We want to touch everybody. We want to look at the assistant directors, deputy directors, and management levels." And it's good that you do that, but the dollars that were laid out for you in doing that really don't amount to much. But I think, and you purposely did not say anything about the levels in the schools. And with school administrators almost double the state average, that's not helping the children in Portsmouth. You need to get those teachers in the classroom where they need to be. That's what needs to happen. The administrators, I went and looked at the website, and I mean, they're all making well over a hundred thousand dollars. All of these people, I can't believe it. I mean, you've got millions of dollars wrapped up in school administrators. Now, I would like to, and I might even just FOIA the information, I want to see how many of them actually show up to work. how many of them actually show up to work and how many days they miss, because there's something wrong in Denmark. Now, the, another thing is, you're supposed to be doing those quarterly reviews for the schools. The jury recommended that you do that quarterly. So I would like to have an update. The taxpayer alliance would like to request an update to that presentation that was done January of 2014, where it outlined exactly how those funds were still disappearing in violation of state law. Would like to please have an update for that. And then, I, you know, they, you have a consensus of four to not touch that school budget, but you don't even know how much money they're going to return at the end of the year. Last year, they had 12 million. You know, I, I mean, how can you give them more and not even look at cutting their budget when you don't even know how many millions they're sitting on? It happened before it's going to happen again. And as far as what the gentleman said before, that, these are not new school board members. Only one of them, or two of them, two of them are new. The others are the same ones that have been there for eight years and misappropriated the 92 million. They're not new people. You know, you've been dealing with it for a while now, and you really need to get a handle on it. The other thing I want to say, and two weeks ago, I just want you to know how the citizens felt when they sat here and they watched you hang, they watched the consensus of four hang two men in front of our eyes. I never in my life witnessed that, and it was disgraceful.
Good night.
And disgusting.
Mr. Ron Evans.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Evans, lifelong resident of Portsmouth for all 39 years. Reside in the Rolandwood section of this city. I'm here tonight not to be in the limelight or to win any popularity contests, which I, which I can assure you, I will not. Here tonight to try and stop this crazy train before it derails. I'm referring to, of course, the proposed tax increase, which is already too high. It seems that every year, the school board says jump, and you ask how high. It's my understanding that they have received some $90 million increases over the course of a decade. When will it end? They act as if the taxpayers' dollars are theirs to do with as they please. They squirrel away money that should have been returned to council. Then they hire a new superintendent behind closed doors and ups his pay 50K. A superintendent, I might add, comes from a school system a mere fraction of the size Told they are in violation on both of these actions, and that's the end of it. The only ones who suffer any consequences are the taxpayers. Hear the constant cry of it's for the children, please. A sign at CHKD makes that same false statement. A large chunk of their money goes towards an obscene salary for a CEO. The state of the current council is sad. It's a sad affair and reflects, reflects badly on the city as a whole. I see hypocrisy, cronyism, and abuse of power, just to name a few. Your callous attitudes and lack of empathy to the taxpayers only serves to breed even more contempt for government. Then I see a man of integrity like John Rowe disrespect it, berate it, belittle it, and ultimately fired while retaining a do-nothing auditor. Kind of makes one want to puke. So instead of bridging the racial divide, you're actually driving a wedge into it. When you set the bar here for one segment of the population and here for the other, in the end, it hurts everyone. Brass tax. Where's the money from the fuel savings realized due to decreased fuel prices? Where's the money saved by having recycling? I guess we won't see any of that. Any tax increase will burden all of us, especially those at or near poverty level income, which includes yours truly. The poverty level for a single person is under $12,000 a year. As of now, 13.65% of my income, pre-tax income, goes towards real estate taxes alone. I seriously doubt any of you pay that much. My 75-year-old house is assessed at $123K, whereas someone making 10 times as much, $120K, and living in a house assessed at four times as much, $492,000, only pays 5.2% of the salary in taxes. My point being, there is nothing fair or equitable about that. Translation, the poor suffer far more than the well they do. Please don't raise their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. There is a leftover piece of business from the last year. The $7 increase that you imposed on vehicle registrations so that you could give an additional 1% raise to city employees last year. That was done because you didn't have enough surplus funds from the previous fiscal year so you could do a full 3%. That money, I continue to say, needs to be undone. That increase needs to be undone. It had nothing to do with services to owners of vehicles in the city, and it's a stealth tax increase. Insofar as certain council members' assertions that there ought to be a law against equalization of tax rates, I find it interesting that the person, persons who asserted that imposed a $23 million surcharge on the citizens of the city to give to 400 retirees a social security offset that they were not promised or owed under the terms of their retirement plans. So here, he's put in a $25 million, I'm sorry, $23 million tax increase, not all at one time, it's amortized, but then he has issues about raising taxes out where people can see them. That's hypocrisy. I believe that tax increases, when needed, need to be transparent. They need to be advertised, and they need to be explained. The justification for tax increases should be the support of essential services, the funding of essential projects. And there are times that the city has, long periods of time at that, that the city has deferred maintenance on infrastructure so as to maintain the illusion that there is no tax increase. But there's always that hidden tax increase that comes from having to make emergency repairs or build $79 million court complexes because of the deferred maintenance. Penny wise, pound foolish. So if it's necessary for there to be a real estate tax increase, it is essential that it be fully explained and that it be readily apparent to the citizenry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kucherovsky.
Good evening, friends and neighbors of the city of Portsmouth. It's times like these that you wish you had Mr. Chandler. He did sharpen the pencil. He might not have communicated very well, but he could put a budget together. And what I'm concerned about is, due to the lack of state funding now in our schools, we've got to make up for the shortfall. There's no doubt about it. But we cannot continue to levy the heaviest tax burden on the private property owner in the city of Portsmouth. And if you increase ambulance fees, you know, right now, it costs nothing to ride an ambulance in the city of Virginia Beach. But in Portsmouth, you can face a total of almost $800 to travel in an ambulance. So if you increase those fees, you're going to further burden those very people that are the weakest. And then, of course, we know we have the highest tax rate in the region, where Virginia Beach has a general tax rate under a dollar per 100. It's currently at .93. We're at $1.27. And I know that we have the lowest tax base due to all the property in the hands of the federal government, but it's like we're in mini Detroit right now. And we need to ward off what could be the inevitable. We're already paying so many people who are vested in retirement plans that should have never been there. And we can't, it's not sustainable. Bottom line, it's not sustainable. And we don't want to file bankruptcy. We don't want JP Morgan Chase coming in and taking over the town and benefiting only the corporate pocketbooks. So what we need to do as citizens here in the city of Portsmouth is realize the valuable position that we're currently in with all the waterfront property. Get the jail off the waterfront. Move it, get rid of it. Increase those boat fees. They're paying way more in other cities, and we continue to give away the commercial boat fees. I know that we're increasing some of the other fees. I know it's going to cost me to put a driveway in, but I'm a resident, and it's time to think about the IDA and what their position is and the valuable land that we hold, the 300 or so acres off West Norfolk Road in anticipation of the allocation that we already have from the federal government for the third most important port, I feel, on the eastern seaboard. And when those workers come in, and I know this is five to 10 years down the road, we've got to get Bobby Scott engaged. If he can take Norfolk State and put in a cybercrime institute, he's got the power, he's got the people, and he's going to save that school in the long run, and he can save the city of Portsmouth. Senator Louise Lucas, wonderful people who can help us, and we've got to work with them because we hold a valuable gem on Craney Island that we've worked for, for 20-plus years, and we can't afford to lose it. We can't do what we've done with the regional jail where we're the landlord and we don't have the strategic position that we really should. So I'm here today to say that instead of putting the tax burden constantly on the private homeowner, let's look at the people who are here. Instead of giving away commercial development, they should be putting in the curbs and gutters and water and sewer taps. Why would we continue to pay for that for them? And for every Kroger that we get on site, we lose a Kroger. And so I feel like it's a wash, and we've got to increase the revenue that we have. And we have to prepare for the future because we are sitting in a valuable position. And if we have the right people who understand that, we can make it happen for us and the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. So some of the things that we probably need to do in the short term, because I know that you've got to increase your revenues, is when I look at the residential electric utility consumers' tax, we need to not increase it so much on the residents, but what about the commercial residential utility tax? Why can't we increase that in concordance with other municipalities? So let's look at all our fiduciary responsibilities.
Thank you, ma'am.
Increase those.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Colleen Clinton-Fram. I was born at Portsmouth Naval Hospital, the original one. I have three children that were born here in Portsmouth. I don't know whether you all can see who's out here because of the lights, but I can. And this is the diverse mix of Portsmouth, and we are all concerned. I've seen infighting on the council. I've seen you all make things up. That's wonderful. But the problem is that we are a city on the edge of bankruptcy. I would know that because my family owns the Circle. I own Squirrely's. And because of our constitutionally-elected officers who, back in October, I believe you all took $365,000 out of city funds to give a bonus to them and their employees because they're Portsmouth family. And yet, they got their bonus from the state anyways. I don't believe anything was refunded. We have a lot of work to do here. I started as a schoolteacher here in 1992, and I have a daughter-in-law starting as a schoolteacher here. This is our home. These people would not be here. You didn't see all those people out there. This should not be adversarial. This should be, we work together, not one neighborhood, not another neighborhood, but us as citizens, black, white, purple, yellow, polka-dotted, I don't care. There's no blame game anymore. We all took part in it. We start from where we're at. What you have is what you got. Okay? I've lost my home. I lost my business. You go up to 17 cents per 100, it doesn't matter to me. When I get out of bankruptcy, I, I guess I won't buy here. I'll buy somewhere else. I don't want to think that, but that would be the option. Chesapeake's in the same position you are tonight. My choice was to come here or go to Chesapeake. There, watch their show tonight if you can. It's, it's just as pretty. What I'm saying to you is, you give your time. These people did not come out here because they don't love the city of Portsmouth. Okay? There are a lot of things we don't like about it. There are a lot of things wrong. Nothing's perfect. But we need to get something together and pull this together, or there will be no Portsmouth. I don't have an answer, but I'd be more than work with, more than willing to work with anybody on some kind of solution. Because I know why my business closed, and it's abuse of power, and City Hall is not home to everybody. And I guarantee, most of these people don't feel like it's home to everybody. And if you ask your business owners, putting the tax on them or on your homeowners, it's not going to work. We don't have people coming through the tunnel. We don't have a large financial group to draw from. We are a blue-collar city. And if we don't work together, then, I don't know, I guess maybe we'll become Norfolk County again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the annual operating budget that establishes or increases the tax rate on real property and rates on buildings budget that establishes or increases the tax rate on real property and rates on building, engineering, and ambulance fees permits, and includes proposed rate changes to take effect on July 1st, 2015. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this specific public hearing, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this public hearing.
City Council, I'm just sitting over here. My name's Anthony DiOrio. I renovated a house. I'm from Jersey. I renovated a house and started in November 2012, moved down here in March 2013. And it's really kind of funny because when I came here from Jersey, it was nothing going on here. You didn't have, you didn't have fees at the tunnel. You didn't have recycling. You didn't have snow. So I come from Jersey, and it seemed like everything that, it like followed me, you know?
It says well.
One of the things my neighbor said, like, the house that I got was like abandoned. It was condemned. And I took it, I renovated the whole entire house. I did a minor subdivision with the property next door. And right after I did that, my taxes went up. They went up. And my neighbors were complaining to me because they said, if you make the neighborhood look nice, our taxes are going to go up too. So, you know, I kind of stuck one foot in the grave, and at the same time, you know, my kids are in the school system. My son has a beautiful picture taken with you, Mayor. I just want to say, it's just really weird how like these things just seem to follow themselves, you know, with the tunnel tolls and the recycling and then there's the increase in cost because of the bad winter. When I bought the house, it wasn't in a flood zone, but it was in a flood zone. The maps from the town were old. They were from 2007. In 2009, my area became a flood zone. But I own my house. I don't have a mortgage, so I'm not forced to play, pay flood insurance. But I know one thing, I wouldn't have to worry about that if they came around once in a while and cleaned out the storm drains. I mean, in my neighborhood, in my area, wherever there's, whenever it rains and it floods, it's right around the sewers. The water's not going down. But I'll tell you what I did one day. It was so bad, we couldn't get in our car. The car was parked on the street. I just got a broom. I went down to the corner and just started sweeping the leaves and everything away. And next thing you know, all the water went down a drain. It was that simple. And Jersey, they come around with a truck with a big vacuum cleaner, and they just suck everything right out of those storm drains, and they work great. You know, and it's a real inconvenience. I live in a neighborhood with a lot, like myself, I'm retired, and there's a lot of other retired people in our, in my neighborhood, a lot of senior citizens, a lot of people who've been here 60 years. And they see that things are running down because it's not being maintenance properly. Like our streets, we can't get in our cars because they're not cleaning out the storm drains. I mean, I guess that's part of taxes. You know, you're paying for these things. The garbage, we constantly call up and complain. I've never seen a truck that grabs one garbage can and dumps it. In Jersey, you got 25 guys walking up and down the street. Everybody's grabbing the can, throwing it in the truck. Here, they do it with one person, but if it spills over, they leave it there. And I got the, and the nice lady next door, who'd been there 60 years, she's an older woman, in her 80s, with a broom out there, sweeping up the garbage, you know, to try to keep the neighborhood nice. They could come through with trucks and clean that place out a little bit. When it snows, what is it for somebody to come down, throw some sand and salt down the street? We're paying for stuff like this. We've been, we had two bad winters in a row. They followed me down from Jersey. I broke my leg in February of 2011 on ice, the year I retired. And I come down here, and it's like, holy cow, there's ice and snow down here? What's going on? But nobody does the side streets. So the kids couldn't even go to school for a week. You know what it's like to be home? It's like cabin fever with the kids for a week because there's like one inch of snow out there, and they can't get the school buses to pick them up. They can't walk on the sidewalks because there's no salt or sand on the street. I mean, these are just things to think about. If we're going to pay for taxes, we should get a little something back. 17 seconds, that's all I got.
Thank you. And let me thank you for running the media off as well. What is your address, sir?
1012 Center Ave.
1012 Center, thank you. Mr. Chair?
You asked a question, I was going to get his address to get someone to contact him.
Members of City Council, seeing no additional speakers on this public hearing, it's closed. Item C, Public Hearing on Recommended 2016-2020 Capital Improvement Program, and we have no registered speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on the Recommended 2016-2020 Capital Improvement Program. If you would like to speak on this public hearing but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this public hearing. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. City Managers Report 15-174, Adoption of an Ordinance Accepting a State Homeland Security Grant in the Amount of $27,555 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services Hazmat Team. Vision Principles, Neighborhoods, and Sense of Community. Electronic Roll Call and I have no registered speakers.
May for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 15-175, Adoption of a Resolution Requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to Approve Additions and Deletions to the Streets in the City of Portsmouth for the Purpose of Increasing Municipal Assistant Payments to the City. Vision Principles, Neighborhoods, and Sense of Community, and a Robust Economy for Working Men and Women. Electronic Roll Call and I have no registered speakers.
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0.
We're going to take a five-minute recess and be right back shortly for council members to take care of some personal issues. So please be with us. In the business portion, and I think we're waiting on Vice Mayor. Okay, we'll catch her up. Go ahead. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. New Business 15-176, Boards and Commissions, and I don't believe we have any this evening.
No report, yes, ma'am.
15-177, Item Submitted by Council Members.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring up the issue that we received a memo from the City Managers' Office about two, I think it was about a month ago, in regards to the issue I've raised about the 3-2-1 retirement plan that the safety officials and fire and police are under. And back in August of, August 12th, 2014, at the regular meeting, the council passed an ordinance allowing for the retired police and firefighters to be reinstated as a need arose. We received a memo from the City Managers' Office, giving us some data in regards to when those individuals retired. The information that was not included in the spreadsheet that was given was when they applied for reinstatement. And I would like for, because it has a budgetary impact, at our special session, if our interim city manager would bring that issue and the budgetary impact that it's having, because what is happening is that, under the plan originally, the police and firefighters were to be reinstated on a need basis. What's happening now is that you're having police and firefighters who are retiring and then being reinstated the same day, sometimes within a 30-day period, so that they can be a part of both the Virginia retirement system and the 3-2-1 system. The impact that is having is that, as you know, we have had some discussions about diversifying our police force. And if we are just bringing the same people back in, then we're not going to be successful with diversifying the police force and fire department. Also, we are spending money to send candidates through the training, and they are prepared to go through the academy. But they can't go through the academy because we have people being reinstated. And so I think that's a serious issue that we need to address as we start looking at the impact of that financially, and also as far as diversifying our police force. So if the interim city manager could have that information for us to discuss those, the budgetary expenses that's going on within that type of transaction so that we can discuss it. I brought that up before, we received a memo on it, but we've never really had a conversation on it, and I think it's...
So we want the financial impact that this is having, as well as the impact for the upcoming classes?
Right.
Okay, all right, good. Now, I thought in the package we received, there was also letters that each one of the candidates that came over had signed, and I thought that was dated. Did you not get that in your...
It is. Those are, they were signed, and they're dated. And when you, when you read those, you will note that some of them, some of them requested reinstatement before they even retired.
Okay.
And so it seems like there's some abuses going on with it that was not part of the intent that, when that plan was first passed by City Council, that I think needs to be examined.
Okay, all right, very good. I know the intent of that program, and Mr. Manager, you can chime in if you want. We wanted to make sure we had a level playing field and be able to retain retirees and let them stay here in Portsmouth because they were going to Chesapeake and Virginia Beach and other places working. But it was on an as-needed basis, and we certainly don't want to be impacting incoming classes or anything else to affect the future growth of the force. Mr. Manager, you have anything you want to add to that, or you want to take down that information and get back with us?
I understand the instruction. I'll get the information.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. There was one other component of that. I thought it was about a $60,000 per person savings from them not going through the training.
For the retiree not going through the training, sure.
Correct. So it was about a $60,000 per person.
And that should be in his impact analysis that he provided to us, and Dr. Whitaker. All right, thank you. All right, any other council members? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-178, Report on Pending Items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on April 14th, 2015. There were 21 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on April 14th, 2015. Three of the speakers required action by staff. Geraldine Johnson would like the city to remove the sign in front of her property which reads, "Road May Flood." Eleven known street flooding areas were selected for placement of these signs. The signs are traffic safety devices intended to warn drivers about potential road hazards related to flooding. Stephen Hogg expressed his concern about his personal property being unlawfully taxed by the city of Portsmouth. Under Section 58.1 of the Code of the Commonwealth of Virginia, local municipalities have the right to tax and collect the monies when due. Billy Moon has concerns about what he says is a sinkhole forming on his property located at Green Leaf Trail. Since the last council meeting on April 14th, 2015, Mr. Moon has obtained an attorney. The city attorney's office will now take the lead and advise staff accordingly. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Let me just ask briefly, what do we do with Ms. Johnson on the flood sign? What was the...
I'm going to turn up the front.
And is Fred here?
Yes. Oh, he wasn't.
Yeah, there he is. I don't know if there was a whole lot we could do, but I just wanted to...
Mayor, there's not a whole lot we can do. These are areas that we've identified as having potential flooding issues, and once we put the sign up to call attention to that matter, to remove it, even for a short period of time, we felt like would increase the city's liability. To move the sign to another part of the street where it's not as deep, would again have not provided the warnings that we wanted to try and provide.
And that sign is at the very lowest point in that area where that's where we want to put it up?
Yes, sir.
Did we close the loop with Ms. Johnson?
I have not spoken with her. We've talked with Ms. Johnson probably between myself and other staff members at least six times.
Okay.
And explained to her that that's the lowest part and that the sign is important to be there.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hope. All right, and before we get, I think we're ready to get into our non-agenda speakers. And prior to getting into that, let me just mention to the audience that next Tuesday at 5:00, we're going to have a special work session to, once again, continue our deliberations on the budget. So if any of you are interested in coming out next Tuesday at 5:00 here at City Council Chambers, oh, actually, will be in the conference room, we'll be glad to have you. And with that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-179, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Bruce Brimmer, and he's followed by Ms. Pasha Glover.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I represent the Shea Terrace Civic League. I live on 256 Constitution Avenue. And first, I want to agree with Mr. Mayor. I'm no fan of a 17 cent increase on my property taxes either. However, on the same camera interview, I believe that was Channel 13, you asserted that people shouldn't read anything into four people leaving key positions of leadership within days of each other. That is not the sentiment shared with many of your own council, and that is an obvious disconnect. This, what I'm saying is about perceptions. Most of those I speak with perceive a divided city government with many separate agendas. Excuse me, so I can read this more effectively. Simultaneously, we are facing a looming budget crisis being played out on the papers and the evening news. As this deadline approaches, more and more key leaders are leaving or have left. Many of us and many of my neighbors are alarmed by what we see in council, and the media has been echoing our concerns. Frankly, I miss the Smith Brothers. For those of you who don't remember the Smith Brothers, they were the Smith Brothers, okay? They were the salt and pepper voting bloc. They voted alike, many times unawares. It just happened to be one of them was white and one of them was black, but we called them the Smith Brothers. And functionally, they were. They were able to color inside the lines. The lines were the lines of the city limits of Portsmouth. Those are the lines that they worked with, not lines of agenda, not lines of color, not lines of, I've got to get one over on somebody else, or I belong to this political party or the other. They, their lines of concern were what's inside Portsmouth. I miss that. Finally, I want to acknowledge the fantastic job that Ed Hargis has done for this city. Under his watch, crime has steadily decreased every year. Because of Chief Hargis, minority outreach was vastly stronger than when he took the helm. He's not shy about getting in front of an issue, even when it's rough, especially when it's rough. He stands there in front of his people, in front of the issues, and it takes guts, and he shows guts. I admire that. Let me point out that this kind of leadership makes a difference between the streets of downtown Portsmouth and the streets of... downtown Portsmouth and the streets of downtown Baltimore. Ed Hargis exemplifies the kind of leadership that we'd like to see from all of you. Leadership that is inclusive, leadership that inspires, and leadership that gives a sense of direction and destination. To that end, we request that civic organizations such as the Shea Terrace Civic League be included in the selection par, process for Chief Hargis's relief, excuse me. Um, we, we request that civic organizations be included in the selection process for Chief Hargis's relief. Leadership by inclusion would be a great place to start. Now that I'm done tripping over my words, I'm quite finished.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Brimmer. Yeah, first, I just, I want to thank you for the respectful manner in which you, which you addressed this, first of all. Uh, secondly, just want to address a couple points with you. You know, you know, our, our job is to do what's in the best interest of the citizens, uh, and to make sure you serve properly. And to make sure that happens, um, leadership and management need to be in sync. Majority of us didn't feel that seventeen cents tax increase was in your best interests, as I, as you said, you don't either. And so, when management, when leadership gives management a task and management refuses the task, so you, we, you have to make, make, um, tough decisions. Um, most of us, myself included, were very fond of the, of the former city manager. Uh, but the fact that our directions were being ignored, and it was plain, plain and obvious that we were either going to have a seventeen cents tax increase or, or not, we chose not. Um, Chief Hargis, excellent for our chief, sorry to see him, excellent police chief, police chief, sorry to see him go. But it's my understanding, he, he let it be known in February that he was leaving, so that, that has nothing to do with the exiting of the city manager. Um, so appreciate your comments, but let it be known that we, we are charged to do what's in the best interest, and that's, we have to do what we have to do to make sure that we don't do as more to speak as they say tonight and tax most of you, a lot of people out of the city, for one, anyone, or anything caused that to happen. This, this city is bigger than any one individual, so thank you very much for your comments.
May I respond to that, sir?
You may.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Councilman Cherry, if, uh, that kind of honesty and openness about what was going on was out front, the way Ed would put, uh, go out in front of an issue and just open that up, and these questions, these perceptions, uh, would have been quashed earlier on. Okay? You answered my question to my, uh, to my satisfaction. It's just that getting out like, uh, Ed would do, which we, we refer to him as Steady Eddie, um, going out in front of an issue like Steady Eddie would, that's the kind of leadership, that's what we'd like to see more of.
I agree with you. I, I called, I called myself to, to congratulate the, the police chief on the first incident, and the way he got out in front of it and told what he could tell, uh, to the, to the public. But, uh, the day will not come when leadership will allow management to disrespect, uh, leadership while I'm sitting on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Paisha Glor, Glover, is she here? Did I say her name right? Okay. Mr. Tony Goodwin. Is he here? And he's followed by Calvin Turner.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, city attorney, and of course, our city clerk. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak tonight. I am charged with the task of being the chairman of the Portsmouth Council of Civic Organizations, and of course, we have, as a group, are a collective of the civic leagues, and we welcome any and all civic league, condo association, even neighborhood watch into the organization, which we meet, uh, on a, on a quarterly basis throughout the year. It was brought to our attention in our last meeting, in which we generally, uh, task the conversation of the night, um, and sometimes response to things that are going on in our community, but also throughout our country. And of course, one of those things are the relationship or community, uh, what we like to call, uh, community relations between police and our, our citizens of the country, as well as in here in Portsmouth. It was, it was also, um, a, a great honor to have our chief, um, join us that evening at a roundtable discussion just two weeks ago, to talk about how we, all of us collectively, could be part of that community outreach, and how we can all be part of that cohesiveness and bringing together the entire community. With that said, um, the conversation was, was good for about an hour and a half, or, or give or take a few. Um, but the, tonight, we were, we were, um, I would like to, and, uh, also include with Chief Hargis here at the podium, if you could join us up here, please? We would like tonight to recognize Mr. Chief Hargis, um, as our present police chief, and, uh, present to him a token of our sincere, uh, acknowledgement of his superior service. And, uh, thank you, sir, for joining us. And with the PCCO board and board, uh, selective members here tonight in support, we would like to, um, acknowledge that stats tell the story. He has continually come to our meetings, uh, on a regular basis, never missing one, to be honest with you, and telling us that crime stats have continually dropped percentage points by percentage points every meeting. And collectively, he's been doing this in other meetings as well. But tonight, the Portsmouth Council of Civic Organizations presents to Chief Edward Hargis in appreciation for your outstanding leadership in successfully reducing crime significantly in our community. Here on April twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, we, of course, uh, give to you a clock of remembrance. Thank you very much for your service, and we continue to be your great-
Just real quick, um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as chief here. Now, I know, and you can't blame me for the last couple of snowstorms or somebody else in the room that brought the snow down here. I know you've been blaming me the whole time, but-
Yeah, but you're going back to Jersey, so take it with you. Right, okay.
But, uh, out of respect for the amount of speakers and what's going to be talked about tonight, I'll keep my comments short, but I do appreciate it. I thank the PCCO for the recognition.
Thank you, chief, well done. Good job, Tony.
Dr. Calvin Turner is followed by Mr. Stephen Hall.
To Honorable Mayor, members of city council, and to the citizenry of Portsmouth, good evening.
Good evening.
Chief executive officers, entrepreneurs, business owners, managers, lawyers, college professors, chief financial officers, pastors, that's what I see before me. But if I were only to read the Virginia Pilot, all I would see is black and white. I moved to the Hampton Roads community six years ago, and into the Parkview community three years ago. I'm a community resident, a property owner, a taxpaying citizen, a community leader, a member of several community boards, a civic league member, a neighbor, a husband, father, son, brother, and unashamedly, a pastor, and unapologetically, African-American. I refuse to allow the Virginia Pilot or the court of public opinion to refer to me only as an African-American pastor. I refuse to allow the court of, of public opinion to take my hopes, my desires, and my dreams for this city to the regressive path of focusing only on the tone and complexion of my skin. And I refuse to allow the court of public opinion to make malignant or toxic our community leaders that represent us today for the purpose of accommodating their self-serving fears or agenda. I have the good fortune of knowing each of the council members, and some in the city administration at varying degrees of intimacy, and I can unequivocally say that I am proud that those who stand before us do so without respect to a white-only or a black-only agenda. They speak on behalf of the masses, and they dare not overlook the least the lost or the left out. White Portsmouth wants the same thing as Black Portsmouth. Both want good jobs, excellent and affordable education, sustainable economic opportunities, occupational enhancement and diversification, and safe neighborhoods. But in respect to African-American leadership, particularly from the clergy, I rise to say continue to provide strong, positive, balanced, and deliberate leadership. There are those who do not fully understand the role of the African-American church in general, and the African-American pastor in particular, the role they played in, during the gruesome and egregious time of our nation's history. It was the African-American church led by the African-American pastor who stayed the course, and now we can drink from the same fountains, swim in the same pools, go to the same schools, serve together in the same military, and live in the same communities. Some didn't like the role of the African-American pastor then, and some don't like it now. Some didn't, some didn't like the leadership that resulted in laws being legislated, decisions being adjudicated, and justice being executed. The African-American preacher has always seen their role as community engagers. We have always spoken to the issues before our people and to our entire community, and at the same time, we have not always understood the silence that perpetuated the social and moral ills that have bankrupted our nations. We've never understood the silent pulpit when the issues of the community demanded a voice. We've never understood the silent pulpit when our people were either the cause or the effect of community ills. We never understood the silent pulpit when slave owners abused, misused, mutilated, molested, maimed, and even murdered slaves, and then showed up on Sunday saying, "How great thou art," or "What a fellowship." If we learned anything from that era, we learned to stand up and to speak up. We, as, as leaders, you must prevent a declining citizenry, a retreating economic type, tax base, and a them-versus-us mentality with law enforcement. You have to speak up, but don't just speak up, continue to make things happen. Continue to make things happen like renovating the former pines into recreational and educational oasis. Continue to make things happen like bringing Krogers, TJ Maxx, and Chick-fil-A. Continue to make things happen like building courthouses, expanding Tye Water Community College, and lead without distractions, intimidation, or malice. Thank you.
Mr. Stephen Hall is followed by Mr. Daniel Randall.
Pastor, can I get a copy of that speech?
How you doing, Mr. Hall?
It's, it's on tape, Mayor.
My name is Stephen Robert Hoag. I'm a citizen of Portsmouth. I'd like to start out by thanking the citizens of Portsmouth for allowing me to speak at their city council meeting, and of course, I'd also like to thank the servants of the people, the city council members, and the mayor and the vice mayor, uh, for showing up here today and listening to our words. This country was founded on a great aversion to taxes. The Revolutionary War was fought for many reasons, but one of the primary reasons was oppressive and excessive taxation. But it wasn't just against the British. After the Revolutionary War was won, even the current government, under the current constitution that was established in seventeen eighty-seven, uh, there was also rebellion against this government for oppressive taxation. There was something called the Whiskey Rebellion during the presidency of George Washington, the first president of this country. Uh, this rebellion, uh, Thomas Jefferson, he spoke about it in a letter to Paris, and I'd like to read some of the words that he wrote. "God forbid we should ever be twenty years without such a rebellion. The people cannot all and always, uh, be all and always well-informed. The part which is wrong will be discontented in proportion to the importance of the facts they misconceive. If they remain quiet under such misconceptions, it is a lethargy, the forerunner of death to the public liberty. We have had thirteen states independent eleven years. There has been one rebellion. That comes to one rebellion in a century and a half for each state. What country ever existed a century and a half without a rebellion? What country can preserve its liberties if their rulers are not warned from time to time that their people preserve the spirit of resistance? Let them take arms, the remedies to set them right, as to facts pardon and pacify them. What sign, what signify a few lives lost in a century or two? The tree of liberty must be refreshed from time to time with the blood of patriots and tyrants." In other words, the aversion to excessive and oppressive taxation was so great when this country was established, that some of the founding fathers, including Jefferson, advocated open rebellion against the government, just as a means and a bulk worth against oppressive, uh, taxations that violate the liberties of the people. I'd also like to read a quote from Thomas Paine, who is a very famous Enlightenment philosopher and one of the founding fathers of this country. He wrote books like Common Sense, The Age of Reason, and my personal favorite, The Rights of Man. He says, "In the representative system, the reason for everything must be publicly, must publicly appear. Every man is a proprietor in government and considers it his necessary part of his business to understand. It concerns his interests because it affects his property. He examines the cost and compares it with the advantage, and above all, he does not adopt the slavish custom of following what in other governments are called leaders. It can only be by blinding the understanding of man and making him believe that government is some wonderful mysterious thing that excessive revenues are obtained." I, uh, wanted to address some of what I feel are excessive revenues in the Portsmouth city budget. I have a copy of the Portsmouth city budget right here, which I reviewed rather thoroughly. It's for two thousand twelve through two thousand fourteen. Got about a minute and a half, so let me point out some stuff. Property taxes, real property and personal property, for two thousand and fourteen amounted to a hundred and twelve million dollars. I find that rather excessive. The city debt, debt applicable to the debt limit, as of June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, six hundred and thirty-one million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I find that highly inappropriate and incompetent, uh, to say the least. I also wanted to address, uh, the fact that we spend sixty-three million, uh, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars in fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, uh, for the police department. Uh, there are three hundred and forty-eight police officers in Portsmouth, which is only forty-six square miles. That's about seven police officers per square mile. I think that's excessive. I think we could cut money out of there. Um, and it looks like I'm running out of time. I wanted to address the education si, uh, situation, but that would be rather redundant at this point, because I feel many people have commented on it, so, uh, I'll end with that. Thank you for listening to my words. Have a good night.
Good night, sir.
Mr. Daniel Randall is followed by Mr. Barry Randall.
Giving honor to God first. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
City council members, individual audience members. Individual audience members. These are just a few names, but I just want to let everyone know that all lives matter.
Following Mr. Randall is Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I wasn't prepared for that. Thus, my son, he knows I've always told him I didn't want him to go this route because of the dangers that we face fighting for the people. I had no idea that he was going to be here, but I want him to know that I love him and that I appreciate him standing up for the people as his father is doing the same thing. Is Mr. Walter Brown Jr. here? If he is, or his family, they can stand. Is Ms. Monica Atkins, could you please stand? Asher said something today that really helped me, when he said that because of the bookings of four hours and the rest is low, we're not here to demonize our chief or any person in particular, but however, something is wrong. I don't understand how we keep listening to people saying that crime is down. Ms. Monica Atkins lost her son to violence, Mr. Antonio Atkinson. Mr. Walter Brown Jr. lost his son, Mr. Walter Brown III, to violence. It hurts because we've had about five killings in the last four or five months unsolved. Three of those have not been solved by the police department, and two of them have been committed by the police department. It hurts because, and whether people believe who I am or who I say I am in God, thus neither here nor there because I know who I am and whose I am. So, Vice Mayor, I don't have anything against you personally. I don't even know you to say that I dislike you. So, I guess everybody coming up tonight, God is just working behind the scene because I had something else to say, so I'll say it like this. I come begging you, ma'am, to make a formal statement that black lives matter. Because when I asked you in the same council chamber, "Does black lives matter?", your response was, "You support the police." That man standing in that corner wants to hear from you tonight. Do you still support the police? Do you still support the police even though we kept this man? Virginia is at will employment, and that the hands of Officer Stephen Rankin, who already, whether justified or not, killed another individual in 2011. But that's not the issue. The issue is after that, his Facebook post told him everything about who he is. "You all follow me. I'm the people's pastor. So you think you know who I am, but you knew who he was, and he shot a kid in the face and in the chest." I may have done something, I thank God for two individuals, a few of them I try to submit to elders and council and stuff, and I can be a hothead and go off sometimes and don't understand things, but I had two individuals share some things with me today, and then I sat back, the Holy Spirit convicted me. Our mayor did an honorable thing, even though it wasn't popular, when he chose you as Vice Mayor. We have to believe in his heart that he was trying to bring diversity to the city. And I don't know if it's because you think you're privileged, because according to you, I can only say what you said. When they asked you, "Why should you be Vice Mayor?", one of your statements was, "Because you're white." And I don't know if you feel like that job is not good enough, but I'm asking you to meet him halfway. Mr. Mayor, I do my part. I'll back down so that we can have some diversity in this city, so that we do not have to continue losing lives. Ms. Monica Atkins wants to know, are you all going to press the next police chief to make sure that justice is coming to her house for her son Antonio Atkins, Anthony Reed, Emmanuel Terry, William Chapman, Walter Brown III, and Omar?
Thank you.
Following Ms. Atkinson is Ms. Alvora Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I know tonight has been long, and I know the budget is important, and I have some things to say in reference to the budget as well, but I have to put that to the side because we're losing lives. I don't know if y'all realize it, but Portsmouth, Virginia, well Portsmouth is the only city, Virginia is the only state where we had three lives lost by police officers. Two officer-involved shootings and one lost in the hands of an officer. If you ask me, CNN should be here right now. A lot of people keep comparing us to Detroit, and Vice Mayor Simmons, they're your Facebook friends that keep saying, "We're Detroit." No, I think they're saying it wrong. We can be Baltimore. All this budget talk would be irrelevant if we had a riot in our city right now because language of the unheard, language of the unheard, language of the unheard, what is that? It's a riot because we keep coming here and expressing how we feel, but no one is hearing what we're saying. So we blew this whole city up and had a riot. We wouldn't even have a budget right now. So let's talk more on what's important right now is that black lives matter. We're losing them, and nobody is doing anything about it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I think we need Barry Randall to come take one of these seats. I know one expires next year on the 31st. And by the way, Councilman Meeks, Officer Rankin, I'm gonna put it out there because they say what you put in the atmosphere, it comes. I'm sure he'll be charged with murder, and I'm sure you got the alert that William Chapman's death was ruled as a homicide. Did you get that alert, Councilman Meeks?
No.
You didn't? I'm sure you'll get it, but by the way, what is that considered? Is homicide murder, was he killed by officer? Because last time I was here at the council meeting, you didn't agree or you didn't say so. So are you willing to say that now? This who y'all voted for? This who y'all voted for? These black lives may not matter now, but that black vote will when the next election
Ms. Alvora Johnson is followed by Mr. Randy Bailey. Ms. Johnson here? She's gone. Okay. Mr. Randy Bailey?
He was. She gave up.
And following Mr. Bailey is Mr. Earl Lewis.
Well, good evening, all. Yes, unfortunately, I'm back. I thank you all for being here, and I thank Ms. White for handling a very active circus this evening. I would like to jump on a bad wagon and thank Chief Hargis for his many years of dedicated service. The city will sorely miss his experience, his knowledge, and his leadership. The thing we've been talking about is the budget, and with the ideals of our founding fathers, I found a $160,000 cut in the budget. Nelson Rockefeller, Arnold Schwarzenegger, Rudy Giuliani, and Bloomberg, when they took office, they all decided that they were going to pay a dollar. So I challenge all of you to put a resolution forward in cost-cutting, as you're all successful in your businesses, cut your salaries to a dollar, save the city $160,000. You got your, someone brought up your food and everything else that you're bringing here? Well, bring a bag of lunch, cut some more money. You got a golf course. It doesn't make any money. Of course, unfortunately, you'll be unable to unload it because I don't think anybody would come to this city and buy it. You were talking about the watershed in, I believe it's Suffolk, on the other golf course. That's something you do not want to get rid of. The reason being, it protects your watershed. You sell it to a developer, and the next thing you're gonna know, you're gonna have a chemical plant built on it, and your water supply is gonna be polluted. That's the reason to hang on to that property, protect the citizens, protect your water Now, when we get into the rest of the budget, I looked up the city departments and the city salaries. I got two pages. I went to the schools, and just for the employees, I got 55 pages. I've never seen a more convoluted system in all my life, and I was 30 years in the Navy and 10 years in the Justice Department, and I've never saw anything like that. You have so many executive assistants in administration who don't teach the children to make over $100,000 a year. Why should a pencil pusher get $100,000 a year when a teacher is getting like $40,000, and they're struggling trying to teach the students? You have many young people in here who would like to get an education. Pay the teachers, don't pay the administrators. It's been brought up several times that the administrative department in the school system is four times what anybody else's is. Start your cuts there. Another place you can cut, the city manager's office. When I looked on the organizational chart, he's got an executive assistant and an assistant. That's kind of redundant, and it seems to me the executive gets paid more. Cut the position, save some money. And I bet if you go through the rest of the city departments, you can find some more. Now, several ladies have asked me about what the city workers are doing. One lady sat there and commented how she goes to Walmart every morning, 8:00 in the morning. There's a five-ton city dump truck parked in the parking lot while the city employees are inside shopping. They commented about street sweepers. These are tractors with rotary brushes going down the alleyways. Well, there's a pickup truck in the front with one guy in it, a guy on the tractor, a pickup truck in behind it following it, and then another pickup truck driving around watching everything. There was a tree cut in Port Knollack. It was hanging over a senior chief petty officer's house in the Coast Guard. He called nine times to get it cut down. Finally, we shamed them into cutting it down. They got there at 8:00 in the morning, and they cut the tree down. Eleven city workers, seven trucks. They had the tree done by 10:30. They sat there till 5:00 in the afternoon with the motors running, eating sandwiches and reading newspapers. Another woman went to Walmart at 9:00 at night, and here's a social services car with a woman and her three children getting out, calling her mommy, going into shopping. These are all those kinds of things you need to look at. These are all the kinds of things that you need to start listening to these people. These people see what's going on.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Earl Lewis, is he still here? Reverend Joe Fleming. And he's followed by Ms. Sally Chapman.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Godre, and Sir Rand Cordell, members of our city. Thirty-four years ago, I came to Portsmouth in September, and I think it was in November that Mayor Johansson had chosen a committee to search for a new city manager. I think the city manager had died in a plane wreck or something. There was one black member of the council who had been appointed by council by the name of Reverend Ben Beamer, and I was appalled because... And, uh, I was appalled because I had read in the newspaper that he had appointed three persons to serve on that committee and didn't select Reverend Beamer. With Portsmouth being 50% black. Because I'd just gotten to town and I just came up and I asked him, "Why didn't he appoint Reverend Beamer to be on the committee?" And he said that he wished the time would come when he would not see black and white. I said, "I hope that time doesn't come." I was, I was shocked that he would have the nerve to do that. So I asked him, I said, "What if the council was predominantly black?" And we were looking for a city manager and the mayor only chose the members who were black to serve on that committee. 34 years later, the issue of black and white still causes us a lot of grief. I mean, Mr. Chandler left. Black and white members of council fired him. That was it. But the council now is majority black, which isn't really, you know, a big deal, but it is true. People voted for that. And the city manager disrespected the members of council. He, he came to the city. Even though the black ministers recommended that you all not hire him. You all did anyway, so you got what you deserved. But he had been fired three or four times in the region. Had even served here. And was on the committee recommended to spend $7 million of the city's money. But it's not unusual when the tide changes and the color changes that it affects the system. When the city manager in Suffolk, who's about to leave, became city manager 10 department heads left within 14 months. That's not unusual. This is America. That's why all the Republicans in Congress vote together. This is America. This is the way we do in America. And why a member of this council will always be running to the newspaper talking about the black folks did this on council. I don't understand. I wonder if he loves the city. Somebody ought to speak to him and tell him to work on the budget if he knows how to do that. Instead of spending time talking about what the blacks do, what the black preachers say. You can't stop black preachers from talking. That's what we do. That's our job to talk.
Thank you, Pastor.
So to just, just continue to harp on that and to make that an issue is an excuse for going to work and dealing with the needs of this city. If you don't like the city, why run? And why worry about the folks who drink tea in the morning and drink 2 and 10 in the evening and party during the day?
Reverend Fleming? Thank you.
Ms. Sally Chapman? Is Sally Chapman in the audience? Okay. Ms. Ebony Barnes? She's followed by Ms. Kentrell Devon.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
All right.
My name is Ebony. Clerk has all my information. I said I want to first address all this bashing and backstabbing of two of these council members in the newspapers and in the news. Come on, people. We want a councilman who asks questions, try to get to the core of things, and don't follow the leader like he doesn't have a brain. I applaud you, Dr. Whitaker. Some might not agree with a lot of things that you do, but that's their problem. Y'all and y'all. Okay? Okay, crime in our city, whether it be from the public or by our police, is unacceptable and should not be tolerated or swept up underneath the rug. Our police have been getting away with a lot of crime themselves for years. Some public knowledge, some street knowledge. I myself have been confronted by the police one day just coming out of my house just to dump water out of my cooler into a grass uh, instead of pouring it down the sink or my toilet and using it as waste. To the police, why all this unnecessary killing and stereotyping? What happened to justice for all and giving everyone their day in court? Why shoot to kill instead of shooting in the leg or the arm to bring them down, book them, and give them their day in court? Remember, these folks are somebody's families and loved ones too. And I feel these tolls are, and the lack of not having enough to get to these jobs are the blame. These tolls are getting this, you know, keeping the city into a box with no way out. Folks are boxed in with nowhere to go. And people that are boxed in do stupid things like commit these crimes. It's nothing for these kids to do around here. And for our citizens, we all matter, no matter what color they are, where they stay at, or their income bracket. All of us matter in our city of Portsmouth. This is our city, my city, your city. And let's do our job, let's support them. Um, you know, this is what we're electing y'all for, you know, to represent us. And represent it well. You know, that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Following Ms. Devon is Reverend Melvin Mariner.
Good evening. My name is Kentrell Devon. I reside in Newport. I'm here tonight on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth due to the crimes that are being committed within our city. I went through the Citizens Police Academy because I wanted to try to advocate on behalf of the police department as well as our young men to kind of bridge the gap, to be one who can say, "I know some on the force, you can trust them." And to say on the same token, "I know these young people and I know what they're capable of." However, without trust being in place, we see what happens. We saw the destruction in Baltimore and I pray every day that Portsmouth is better than that. I pray our young men and our young women are wiser than to take to the streets and destroy their own community. We are better than that. And while I speak to my community, that I also have to speak to the officers that are patrolling our streets. As a citizen and a mother of sons, I want to know that the police officers that are patrolling our streets think more of them than placing pictures of a black man being lynched on their Facebook wall. I personally lost trust due to the fact this was something that was done in 2010 with several postings being displayed on this police officer's wall, yet he was still a part of the police department patrolling our streets. We often say black men are persuaded by the music that they listen to and the video games that they play. Is it a difference when a police officer can play "Mama, May I Go Out and Kill Tonight"? I'm not understanding why this police officer was still patrolling the streets of Portsmouth. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the community that I live in constantly. And I would say constantly because it's more than once. Within a year's time, my son has had handcuffs on him when he hadn't violated a crime. Once he was arrested and my home was broken into after the police officer asked him to step outside of his home when he told her she would not be allowed to search my home. He was not drunk, but they charged him with being drunk in public. When my neighbor, who was the citizen, the community president, came out and said, "At least allow me to secure Ms. Devon's home." She was told no, and my home was burglarized. I have been there since Newport was built. And I had never had a burglary until the police department violated my son's rights. Again, just before this officer was accused of the accusations, and I would give the department due justice as far as their investigation. But as a mother, I felt it was my own right to investigate the police officers that are patrolling my streets. And when I put this man's name in the system, could you imagine how I felt? I advocate for the police department because I want my friend's son killers brought to justice. I want, I know we need police department. We need a stronger police department. Dr. Whitaker spoke of needing diversity on the police department. So no, I do not want people leaving this city saying, "We do not think blue lives matter." They do, we all matter. But the key factor here is trust and respect. How can we tell these young men to trust and respect the police when they can do their own research and find findings like this? It gives just cause for them to have distrust. I was told, "When you hear something more than once, you should look into it." If everybody is saying there's a problem, you need to look into it. We cannot continue to just say, "It's a black situation, it's a white situation, it's the police department, it's the black community." No. We have real issues and it's time, I'm asking, that our council, if need be, do an investigation on the citizens patrolling officers. Because if this is what you call trust, I have no trust. And that's a lot because I was telling citizens to go and be a part of the Citizens Police Academy. I was so proud of our department when I went through that training and to find out that there's an officer who thinks no more of an African-American to have a lynching that says love. And I'm not going to hold this up because it's just so ugly that I don't want to display it. Please look into our police department.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker?
I'm not, I'm not speaking for the council just as an individual council member, but a person that would have something like this doesn't deserve to be on anyone's police force. And I just want to, and I want to say this too because it has come out that, um, there was a grand jury, um, that, that not indict this person. I've been sitting here for several weeks, uh, hearing persons making statements about, uh, the grand jury and its relation to the school board. And I think we all know by now, um, and personally here in Portsmouth, that grand juries can be directed. And it's, it's a shame that this has once again happened. And I just want the community to know that, um, this, this should not be tolerated. It should not be tolerated.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. And I'm clerk.
Yes, sir. Reverend Melvin Mariner. And he's followed by Mr. Tom Thornton.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, and distinguished members of our Portsmouth City Council. And to all of our elected officials who are present, to most of all the citizens of this great city of Portsmouth, my name is Melvin Mariner. I am the current president of the Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Steering Committee here in the city of Portsmouth. I also serve as the senior pastor of the Grove Baptist Church, 5910 West Norfolk Road in the Churchland section of Portsmouth. I've sat for quite many hours gathering thoughts. Uh, I've gone from left to right. But on behalf of the MLK Steering Committee, we want to thank you for the democratic process that was in place. Some time ago, when Mr. Chandler, our former city manager, resigned, there was an interim city manager placed, Mr. Rowe. Following that, the city council sought not to have an open hiring process, but to trust themselves and bring Mr. Rowe in. That was perhaps not the best choice for MLK Steering Committee. We tried to influence members of the council to have an open hiring process. But of course, the vote outweighed our ideology. Based upon that, we accepted the ideology and the decisions from the city council. We move forward, working and hoping that Mr. Rowe would do a better job, a greater job for our city. Following that, the city council determined that he was not the best person for the city. MLK's stance tonight is thank you for the democratic process. To me, it's not just racial issues. It is our ideologies being spoken. It is how we feel about certain situations. I stand with mixed emotions right now because I stand on behalf of MLK, but I also stand as a part of the clergy. I listened to Pastor Turner. I listened to Pastor Fleming. And I agree with what they said. But anytime that we do not look at disparity, anytime that we throw disparity down to the ground and make it something that it is not, if we call truth lies and a lie truth, then we are misleading the people. There are certain disparity gaps in this city that we need to honestly look at, evaluate, and have a plan for. Black lives matter. We've heard that and heard that. But until they can matter to people on council, Portsmouth would never be the stronger city that we could be. I stand here in moments of perhaps perplexity because I don't live in Portsmouth. So you're saying, "Well, why is he speaking?" I've served Portsmouth in various ways in 26 years. I am currently the volunteer chaplain for the fire department. We currently have $25,000 on our budget for citizens of Portsmouth alone who need their lights cut on. We have 25 additional thousand dollars in our search for GAP program, a tutorial program. So when people speak on the council about clergy keeping quiet, let me tell you, that will never happen as long as we're breathing and strong in this city. That will never change the course because we recognize that there are marginalized people who don't have a voice to many of you. You don't see them, you don't hear them. And I pray that we would not have a Baltimore because I don't think Portsmouth could survive a Baltimore experience. But as I stand here in the moments that I have left, I really want to encourage you because I know that leadership is very difficult. Some things you do that are not right, some things you do that are good and people agree with it. But I stand here suggesting to all of you that there must be a level of integrity. There must be a level of truth and transparency. For you cannot just claim we walk together as black and white and not understand the disparity of being who we are as individuals. If you overlook that, it will bite you in places you never thought you would be bitten in. If you do not realize the disparity that is in this city, you shall go through this city and act as though it is a perfect place and act as though no one else matters but you. I suggest that you take a, perhaps a perspective that we all matter and that if we don't change, this city will continue to lose members and citizens. Well, how does it affect churches? You think it affects just churches and businesses and schools? No. We are losing members because they're moving out of Portsmouth and don't want to come back. Do you think that it doesn't affect us? It does affect us, that we don't have to draw a population to draw from to our congregation to make our city that much stronger. Thank you for listening, but black lives do matter.
Mr. Tom Thornton? Is he here? Ms. Cynthia Lewis?
This won't
This won't cost you a dime. Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, the council members, and thank you for Delta Day at Portsmouth City Hall. I represent Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter, and we do have a few members still left for the long evening. I'm tired and red. And I want to inform you that this is our seventy-second year of providing public service to the city of Portsmouth, and we have really enjoyed the opportunity for your approval of our Delta Day at Portsmouth City Hall, because we participated in Delta Day at the nation's capital, Delta Day at the General Assembly, and Delta Day at the United Nations. And we thought it was very fitting and proper to introduce to you, and the mayor approved Delta Day at City Hall, and we thank you for that. We had an opportunity to have conversations with one-on-one with some of the city council members, our elected officials, and on several topics of concern regarding the Virginia Plan as it relates to the city of Portsmouth. As we increase our public services to the city, I want you to be aware of one activity, and this is my last statement, that we recently held at IC Norcom High School on April eighteenth. And it was a summit in collaboration with the Portsmouth branch of the NAACP. The title of it was "The Man, the Myth, and Your Legacy." We invited Ms. Mona Atkins, she was one of the speakers. We also invited police and sheriff's department, and they participated in providing dialogues and discussions between the community and law enforcement on effective strategies for community and law enforcement engagement. That's right. One of the public services that we provide, when we see an area that we can assist the city, we jump in on it and we invite the appropriate personnel, and we have had a successful summit for the young men of Portsmouth. And we want to thank you not only for supporting our initiatives, but we want to thank you for your support of the city as you represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to clarify something real quick. There's a young lady come up here, I think her last name was Atkins. Two weeks ago, I called order because I felt like she called our police department murderers or killers. So I don't want you to think that it was, that was the reason to point an order. So she wanted an answer. I hadn't heard anything about this riddick saying it was a murder or whatever, so when she came up, that was, you know, I was not, I didn't know the facts of the shooting or what happened, but I just thought it was out of order for her to call our police department murderers or killers, and that's why I ordered a point of order. I said it to the mayor. The mayor didn't take a vote, he continued, and that's why she wanted rebuttal today. So I just want to make sure the citizens knew that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Meeks. And I'm clerk.
Mr. Luke McCoy?
He's not here.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Was there a speaker? I don't want to take a--
No, 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 you're it. You're between me and the gavel. Oh, you better hurry up.
You and the gavel. Well, so not between you and dinner, I'm all right, I guess. Or me and dinner. No.
You got one other--
Yeah, let's hear the last--
Go ahead, let's hear the last--
Our final speaker is Mr. Edwin Street.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Street. I live in Craddock, and I'm the vice president of the Craddock Civic League. This is my wife, Tanya Street. The thing we like about Portsmouth most is that it's real community. And I want to thank you for letting us speak. City Council and city of Portsmouth, good evening. Just want to invite you to the Craddock Annual Spring Fest. We are organizing the 2015 spring season event called the Craddock Annual Spring Festival that highlights community connection, agriculture, art, local businesses, and organizations. The Craddock Annual Spring Festival is encouraging community participation and involvement with the development, preparation, and operation of our fun street fest. So once again, I just want to invite everyone, it's May second, which is this Saturday, it's going to be from nine to three o'clock, nine to three. Everyone is invited. There's a lot of young people in Craddock, and we have pony rides, we have a DJ, we have a One Love Unity Center is presenting a stage of about six, about six local talent artists from our area. And once again, we want to invite you, May second, nine to three. Thank you. It's in Craddock, after square.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to backtrack a little bit. Kentrell Devon spoke a little while ago, gave us a package with a picture. You know, sometimes, sitting here, we often fault that silence means consent, but in looking at this picture, I don't consent to that. I think it is absolutely any inhabitant of this plant, planet, would deplore something like that being on anybody's Facebook page. I don't care whether the police officer, a city council person, or a plumber, that's deplorable. And can't say anything more than that. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Wasn't aware of that, and I'm sure it'll be handled in the context with everything else. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Meeks?
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify one other item for the citizens at home. A lot of y'all don't know us personally. You just grab whatever the newspaper writes. You don't know where we grew up at or how we got where we are, but it's not one member up here does not think that black lives does not matter. And if you think that, you got other issues. All right? Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else cleansing this over? All right. Good night. We adjourn.[1796.48]